The following is a production of Cary TV, the Town of Cary's government access channel.
Call to order, the January 30th meeting of the Cary Town Council. I'd like to start this meeting on a sad note unfortunately. Cary has lost one of its heroes. On January 17th in Kandahar, Afghanistan, we lost Andrew Sipple, who grew up in Cary. Andrew, as I said, grew up in Cary, was raised in Cary, joined the Army in 2010, was assigned to the 1st Cavalry Division out of Fort Hood, Texas. And in addition to serving in Afghanistan, also served in Iraq and was awarded many, many medals, too many to mention at this time. Andrew's family and friends remember him as a humble man who had sincere compassion for all. God bless Andrew and his family. And at this time, I'd like to offer a prayer for Andrew, his family, and all those who have made the ultimate sacrifice. And if you'd like to join me, I'd ask that you bow your heads at this time. All powerful God, we honor tonight those men and women, our sons and daughters, husbands and wives, fathers, brothers, sisters, mothers, who have laid down their life for their country. Whether weary or emboldened, quiet or defiant, vulnerable or ready when you called them home, their sacrifice is too humbling for words except these uttered in prayer. Loving Lord, bless them forever in your eternal peace. Let the sounds of strife, the cries of battle, the wounds of war be calm for all eternity in your loving and endless grace. Let these great warriors find rest at last. Ever remind that we who are left behind cherish their spirit, honor their commitment, send them our love, and we will never forget the service they gave. Amen. Ladies and gentlemen, I'd ask that you join me in Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're now at Agenda Item A3, is the adoption of our agenda. We have a couple of changes to our agenda. Number one, Agenda Item E6 is the public hearing and resolution on the proposed amendment to the purchase and development agreement between the town and Memento Mori. Staff requests that we remove this item from the agenda and re-advertise it for a future public hearing. Number two, Agenda Item F1 is the acceptance of the Section 108 loan and loan terms from the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development and approval of final loan terms to Memento. Staff requests that we remove this item from the agenda since we have not yet received the decision on the Section 108 loan from HUD. Staff will bring this item back to us at the same meeting as the related public hearing. Is there a motion to adopt this agenda?
So moved.
There's a motion and a second discussion. Hall in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We now move to Item B, Recognizations, Reports and Presentations. And we have a report from our town manager, Mr. Shiver, on operational update. Mr. Shiver?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to call on our Budget Director, Carl Knapp, to make his monthly presentation on the status of our budget revenue picture.
Good evening, Council. We bring you somewhat better news than the last time, although still good news. As you see on the screen, our forecast at this point for revenues is about $2.8 million above the budgeted level, which represents an increase of 2.2% over the budget. That revenue increase is made up of several changes that you can see here, where the bars on this chart represent the dollar level that the particular revenue source is above its budgeted level, and the percentages to the right of the bars, or the left in the case of the red bars, represent the percentage increase in that particular revenue. As we talked about in November, the sales tax is above the budgeted level. This continues to grow. We've seen very strong growth in the Wake County taxes compared to the state level, some of which is due to the lower level of refunds this year, but also to strong growth. We're forecasting about 6% growth for this year. Included in that growth estimate is some accounting for the decision by Amazon to begin collecting sales tax on behalf of the state of North Carolina. We think that on an annual basis, that will represent about a half percent increase in our sales tax. The numbers we worked up are consistent with those that the legislative fiscal staff have worked up at the state level. Permits and fees related to development continue to grow as we see the benefits of the recovery in housing and office construction. Utility franchise fees are forecast to be somewhat above budget, but this is still early in the year. We've only had one distribution of these, and they will be affected to some extent by the winter weather. And we'll have to see how the rest of the winter goes before we get a little bit firmer handle on where those are going to wind up. Investment earnings are doing somewhat better than planned as well. As far as ad valorem property taxes, we are very close to the budgeted level. There may be some difference in the level as we get a little bit further into the year, but we're still not prepared to show any kind of increase above tax as budgeted there. The parks category, as we mentioned in November, is down due to the fact that the college cup at the soccer park was moved to be handled by the Campbell University for both the collection of the revenues and the expenses associated with that. So in addition to some of those revenues being down, the expenses are down as well. So that's really not a net effect on our budgetary picture. And solid waste and recycling, we continue to see the new solid waste fee coming in just a little bit below projected. I think this is largely because last year, we projected last year's receipts a little bit too high, so the base is a little bit higher than it ought to be for this year. But the new dollar fee that was added seems to be having the effect that was expected on it. With that, any questions?
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Shiver.
Mayor, I have four other items I'd like to mention briefly. First, about our winter storm response. And I'm pleased to report to Council that with the exception of a few slick spots that we still have around town, which our Public Works crews are continuing to monitor and address, all functions are pretty much back to normal operations following the storm event. And through the excellent work and efforts of our Public Works and police staff, in particular those two departments, the number of crashes in Cary during the storm and cleanup was limited to 15, which is fairly low for this kind of event. And I'd also like to give a thanks to our citizens for probably contributing to that limited number as we believe they heeded the warnings to limit their travel during this time. And I think that helped very much with those low numbers and our ability to manage things during the event. Would also like to remind our citizens that this week's solid waste, recycling and yard waste, for those collected toward the end of the week, have been moved one day. Thursday's collection will occur on Friday, and Friday's collection is moved to Saturday. Would also like to note one other thing about a recent project that Council authorized, and we have completed and installed, our AquaStar system. As many of you may remember, when we have snow events like this, in the past, we have been unable, meter readers simply could not get around and be able to read all the meters. With the new AquaStar system in place, of course, we did not have to worry about that. So there are no estimates of water usage that go out on the bills. We have good hard data that was uninterrupted during the storm. So that's sometimes something we do not think about, but helps our operations and also service to the customers very much. Would also like to draw Council's attention to the water plant expansion. Advertising for the construction of the plant, project which will involve the plant being expanded from 40 million gallons per day to 56 million gallons per day, has begun with a bid opening of March 7th. So we anticipate receiving bids at that point. As Council knows, this is a critical project for us in that the construction will not only improve our processes so we can provide high-quality water to our citizens, but it will also accommodate the projected peak day water demands through the year 2030. So we'll be in good shape for water production and provision to our citizens with the completion of that project. Would also like to note the construction of our Western Wake Regional Wastewater Reclamation Facility. It's moving along very nicely. We will, very pleased to report that we'll be able to advise Council. We don't have precise numbers at this point, but this is project originally budgeted at over $300 million. We'll come in substantially under that. Don't know that exact amount, but we're pulling those figures together. We have already received a certificate of occupancy for the administration building that's part of the facility, and we expect to begin startup operations at the plant in the spring of this year. There'll probably be a grand opening and celebration toward the end of summer, the first part of the fall. And the last thing I would like to mention, Mayor, is the Traffic Safety Award. Last month, the town was named a 2013 Outstanding North Carolina Traffic Safe Community by AAA of the Carolinas. So again, hats off to the Police Department for that designation and to Council, and everyone who has a hand in managing traffic operations in town. And with that, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Shiver. And I do want to also commend you and the staff for the snow cleanup. I'm sure Councilors received a lot of emails. Only received one complaint, and that complaint was, "Please don't remove the snow so fast, I want to enjoy it." That's the only complaint I got. Rest where, thanks for all the good work. So thank you to the staff for doing excellent job. Okay, we'll move to Public Speaks Out now. And that's Agenda Item C. We've included instructions for speaking at this forum on the printed agenda. If you'd like to speak, please take a seat in the rows to my right that are shown as reserved, and follow the instructions on the agenda. Public Speaks Out speakers have up to three minutes for their comments, and speakers may speak on any topic that is not a public hearing, and that's for your benefit because public hearings have more time. We have public hearings listed on the PowerPoint slide, and I would thank you for holding your public hearing comments until we reach public hearings. I'll enforce the three-minute time limit to be fair to all of our speakers. There's a timer located on the podium, which is now lit, and there's a green light that turns yellow after two and a half minutes. That means you have 30 seconds left. And when it expires, that yellow light's going to turn into a flashing red. And at that time, I'll have to immediately interrupt you. And I thank all of our speakers in advance for adhering to our three-minute time limit. There is a one-hour time limit for Public Speaks Out, and that's why we have to adhere to that time limit so strictly. So I would ask that all of our speakers, please pay attention to the time. Thank everyone in the audience for recognizing that this is a business meeting. Please do not applaud, make remarks from your seat, or anything else that might distract from our meeting. At this time, I'll open up Public Speaks Out for the first speaker who would like to speak on any topic that is not a public hearing. And I would invite you forward at this time to the aisle on my right.
Hi, my name is Remy Fleishman, and I'm 12 years old and have been on the honor roll for this year in middle school. I currently live in the neighborhood Harmony and was very upset when I heard about the rezoning of my backyard. Many worrying thoughts streamed throughout my mind as I heard about the rezoning. Worrying thoughts such as where will all the wild animals go? Two years ago, I was a student at Turner Creek Elementary and belonged to the Safety Patrol Program. Classes were overcrowded with as many as 30 or more students per class. I was coming into class 10 minutes late because of all the cars needing help unloading students. Imagine if more students were added to the school. If townhouses were built, it would increase traffic density and chances of crime. I hope you'll take my concerns into consideration prior to rezoning, and I thank you for your time. Once again, my name is Remy Fleishman.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Anyone else to speak at Public Speaks Out? Assume everyone's here for public hearings.
Wow.
Sorry for the delay.
No problem.
Hi, my name is Ed Casper. I'm the President of Harmony HOA, which represents 300 homes in Cary. We stand in opposition to 12 RES 20. We've spoke many times on this before. We recently met with Horton a few days ago, and we discussed ideas that we could agree upon. And Horton actually said it was a positive, best meeting they've had. After that meeting, Harmony has talked with our attorney, Brian Edom of Jordan Price, and we gave Jason Mason Horton the contact information and asked him to put in writing things that we had agreed upon. Our concerns have always been the same: density, traffic, and safety. One of the things was the right-in, right-out, which we believe harms Harmony. And we think the solution is really a signal at Park Seine, which is the same as what Chesney Glenn had asked for. Horton claims to have made concessions, and actually were worried about those. One of the ways that they said they would help is at the school sidewalk, something that Harmony liked, except Wake County Public School System feels it's unnecessary and very unlikely to grant such permission. So we'd like to see written commitment first from Wake County. Horton has also proposed widening Turner Creek Road, which is something else that we thought would be a good idea and help our community. But there again, it's on Wake County property, and they need their permission. We think that they should have the permission first before anything proceeds. We want to know, why would Harmony be expected to accept Horton's word on this when our neighbors, Brookstone, which has requested widening of their road from the county and the state, and the county has refused that request to widen their road? So we feel we'd be in the same boat. It would just be protracted on. Horton would build 50 units, and we'd be left with impacted streets. A third concession that was made, was made to Chesney Glenn, but it was at our expense. Horton said to, in order to ensure the health, safety, and welfare of motorists, they developed the right-in, right-out only on North Carolina 55. This is made at our expense. According to TAR report, this improvement was not suggested due to its very potential negative impact. Not only that, according to TAR report, that intersection is not designated or designed to accommodate southbound U-turns, which would be necessary for people going to work.
Mr. Casper, I'm so sorry to have to interrupt you, but we do have your comments, all of them, I think? Okay, very good. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Dr. Bob Perkins. I live in Harmony. Five years ago, we moved down here from Buffalo. It was a welcome change. The weather's nice, the facilities are nice. And when we moved into the Harmony area, we felt that it was a very, very nice area when it was built by Polte. The only situation that we looked at was we realized there was only one way to get in and one way to get out. And over the years, and when we were one of the first ones that moved in, over the years, what happened was that as the houses continued to be built, obviously, the congestion going in and out and the number of individuals, young students going to the school, there became a lot more congestion. One of the things that concerns me, and I've done some informal, let's call it analysis if you will, I've gone door-to-door and I've talked with many neighbors. We're concerned about the, I'll use this term, and I think maybe it's a bit salty in respect, the lack of sensitivity to the issue of the safety of our children. I have two grandchildren that go to that school. And today, when the traffic comes in and out, going back from when they leave school and coming out, if this becomes worse, we are really, really concerned about the fact that the safety of our children are at risk. And I think that this is something, as we look at the advancement of the townhouses and the addition of resources, and I'm certainly not somebody that's against the fact that a community should be able to grow. But it should be grown in such a fashion that there's sensitivity to the congestion of the traffic, but most importantly, we think, is that there should be sensitivity to the safety of our children. And right now, I don't know whether that factor has been given the full analysis that's necessary. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Joel Fleishman. I live in Harmony at 102 Alliance Circle. And the land, the rezoning 20, the land was originally zoned for single-family homes, which I have nothing against, which is fine. And due to lower density, safety, school overcrowding, and traffic. The traffic at peak hours on that two-lane road is abominable. I know that you did a study, but the study was not done at peak hours. At 2 o'clock in the afternoon, there's no traffic there. But at 8:30, 8 o'clock, 4 o'clock, 6 o'clock, it's very crowded, and it's very dense and congested. And I moved from New York to this community, New York City from this community, because I wanted to live in a low-density area and not with multi-dwelling townhouses, skyscrapers, et cetera, et cetera. I was elected to the board as a right-in candidate for Harmony at the last minute. The people were vehemently angry that the people on the board were not representing them. Why, I have no idea. But let me tell you something, it's not that I was the most popular person in the world, that I won by a landslide. Mickey Mouse could have won by a landslide. That's how against the townhouses the people in Harmony are. They're also getting tired with the whole thing. But anyway, Turner Creek to school is overcrowded. And DR Horton didn't negotiate to protect our amenities, pool, tennis courts, fences, et cetera. DR Horton, and I have nothing against him, is a New York Stock Exchange traded stock, symbol DHI. As of today, it was selling for 21.88 at today's close. I am not the CEO of the company, and I am not on the board of the directors. Their business is to make as big a profit as possible. And when you put up multi-dwelling units, you're making a bigger profit. But that's not why all of you were elected. You were elected to keep the town a certain way. We like Harmony and the surrounding area. We are not against single-family homes. That's the reason that I moved here. Builders build whatever they're told. If they could make another $500,000 and put in a garbage dump, they would do it. There's nothing wrong with them doing it. But you're the ones that decide what goes in and what is right for the town.
Mr. Fleishman, I'm sorry to have to interrupt you, but your time has expired.
Sure, no problem.
Do you have additional comments? You could leave them with the town clerk.
No, that's fine. I've made most of it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Respected Council members and honorable mayor, I am Sri Gali. I live in 103 Stanza Court, it's in Harmony. I'm one of the HOA Board of Directors for the Harmony subdivision. Good evening. I'm trying to talk about the case regarding 12 RES 20, which is on the agenda today. I believe in the last Town of Cary meeting, there was a recommendation from Town of Cary to collaborate with DR Horton. And so we met with them a week ago. They made some changes to the conditions, to the zoning, but it was not really trying to adequately solve the real concerns, the three concerns that we always talked about. It was safety, security, and traffic. And some of the things they talked about, but it was not on the paper. As we know it, in our corporate world, in any, in the work we work, if it's not on the paper, that means it's not done. That's what we always believed in. So when we asked DR Horton to put that on paper, they refused to do so. So we went back to my Harmony subdivision homeowners and kind of gave them the meeting minutes, what we spoke and all that stuff. And my community members have indicated they are against the development that DR Horton is proposing, though it seems they are helping, but they are not really solving the real problem. So today, my neighbor homeowners and myself unanimously stand to request you to take notice of our concerns, which are safety, security, and traffic in and around our communities that were still not resolved by DR Horton. Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Council members, depart a little bit from the Harmony project, for a moment, anyway. I'm Steve Vining. I'm one of the managing partners of L-Star. We have tonight on your discussion items, numbers six and seven, which is the Howell property on Davis Drive. I wanted to just come here and just give you a little bit of background information and report to you on some further progress I think we've made, which I think will hopefully make you make your decision even easier. We've received a favorable recommendation from Planning and Zoning Board. The, I think they recognize that this is a, an example of a project where we have worked with the, with the neighboring property owners to try and address their concerns. And there are, there are now four conditions associated with the property. There's a density reduction from our prior project, uh, submittals from 43 units to 28 units. We've, we require a 20-foot buffer adjoining the Farm Pond Road community, and that buffer's outside of any lots, so it is going to be permanent open space as part of the HOA. The lot sizes, we've proposed a zoning condition for the lot sizes, that they be a minimum of 20,000 square feet adjoining the Farm Pond Road community. So that, I think that addresses another concern they had. I think the, the final concern that the Farm Pond Road residents, although they're, they're here tonight, and I think certainly they'll speak for themselves, was the connectivity of the road from this subdivision to Farm Pond Road itself. And we are, we've reached an agreement with them where what we're willing to commit to do, do, and I'm, I'm going to do now, is, is, is tell you that with our site plan submittal, our site plan submittal will reflect that that road does not connect to Farm Pond Road. And the result of that is, is it's frankly going to come back before council then. We'll have to, that's only, that's something that only council is going to be able to decide, but we're willing to, to go forward with that and make that submittal and come back to council. In any event, it's, we're going to be cut back before council in any event because of the, the width issues of, of Davis Drive there, and we're going to be asking for a reduction in the buffer size at that point. So as part of that time, we'll come back to council, we'll also be coming back and proposing that there be no connection to Farm Pond Road by this, from this community. And I think, I think with that, with that, that concession on our part and proposal, I think we've addressed all the issues of the, of the neighbors. We think this is a good project. It's going to be an asset to the community, certainly. And we're going to be available during the discussion to answer any questions that should come up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Good evening. My name is Jim Sherrill, and I've been elected to represent the Farm Pond Road residents this evening at the council meeting. Just a little history, once this project was proposed, from the beginning, the adjacent subdivision, Stonecrest, embraced this idea, talked about incorporating the new houses into their homeowners association. Also, from the beginning, the Farm Pond Road residents had concerns about traffic concerns with a number of accidents and near misses, Farm Pond Road, site visibility coming down Davis Drive. And I don't know if you have it in front of you, but if you reference the page four of the rezoning staff report, it tells you how many accidents and stuff has been over there the past few years. The other big concern was property values, which one house did sell in our neighborhood. It was originally, the, the seller got 10,000 more than the listing price, and once he found out about this subdivision, then the price was reduced. But being all that said, we realize that this is probably going to happen, and we've been working with L-Star Corporation. And here tonight to say that the Farm Pond Road residents will support current zoning and lot sizes on the conditions that L-Star does resubmit a site plan to council for approval, and that council does approve the elimination of any connections onto Farm Pond Road. I was like, so that would make the connections through Stonecrest, who wanted this from the beginning, an existing DOT-approved exit onto Davis Drive from the current Howell property, which is, if you look on those maps, is, is approved exit onto Davis Drive. One other thing I would ask you to look at is, again, based on a letter that was submitted before this by Thurman J. Howell, the original property owner to Wake County, Farm Pond Road is not a collector road. It should have been taken off the plans 20 to 25 years ago. It's still on there. So we ask that that be stricken from the Cary plans as far as the connector road to Farm Pond. Just a couple of other things I'd like to talk about, residents, we've also talked to L-Star about residents on Farm Pond Road would like a larger berm barrier than the boundary that's going to be on Davis Drive. And we would also like on that, some sort of mixture of evergreen plants and some sort of fencing, if, if it's possible. Other than that, we appreciate, and it's been a tedious process, and we appreciate all parties involved as being able to work with us, including L-Star and the Cary Town Council. So with that, thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Honorable mayor and council members, thank you very much for this opportunity to speak. Way back in August, I was here speaking and on that day-
Could you give us your name, please?
My, oh, sorry. My name is Prasad Varhabatla, and I stay in Harmony. And way back in August, I was just here, I was speaking, and on that day, you unanimously voted, saying that there is no way that you could actually approve that zoning, 12 REZ 20, and you wanted the builder to go back and work with us and Chesney Glen and everybody else to make sure that the traffic and safety concerns are taken care of, right? Horton did meet us last week. Now, I will not spend time talking about whether it's a strategic move to meet us just one week before the council meeting, but I'll leave it at that for the moment. The thing is, they look like they did address some concerns. I believe they made the right out of that new development, only a right out and no left turn on 55, maybe that may allay some concerns about traffic. However, as the community that's behind this development called Harmony, the three concerns that we had, which is safety, density, and parity, were not accounted for. Now, let's just take parity for a second. They do assert that they will build some 200 or 250,000-dollar townhomes. For the moment, I'll take their word for it. Let's leave it aside. Let's talk about safety. The kids who walk to Turner Creek Elementary School from our community, there is supposedly a sidewalk that's supposed to come up, but that depends on approval from WCPSs, who may or may not give it, and there's nothing down in writing, right? And end of the day, everything should be in writing for us to believe it. I, I mean, I assume that everybody has honest intent, however, that does not drive decisions. So in that context, there's nothing in writing, even in the two conditions that they added to their proposal, that they are going to build that sidewalk to ensure the safety of our children, and there's more than 300 of them who possibly walk. And the second thing that we're talking about is density. They insist that, they are actually currently at 94 homes in that 15-acre lot, that's about 5.9, or let's take six as an example, and they say it's almost half. Six is not almost half of 3.1, which is that joining community Harmony. Six is not even almost half of eight, which is the zoning condition. But for the moment, let's assume that nobody wants to build 120 townhomes out there. So what I'm saying is not almost half, it is almost 80% of what the zoning conditions permit, but it's almost double of what every neighboring community within one-mile radius is at right now. So from a density perspective, it definitely is not unparalleled. And finally, unfortunately, the, the thing is, they did come and try to make an effort, but end of the day, they did really nothing to, I would say, put it in writing and make sure that our concerns about this development are, are, are taken care of.
I'm sorry I have to interrupt you-
Yeah, I'm sorry. It's only four seconds. By the way, I'm not against development, but I think it should be in writing.
Do you have additional comments? You can leave them with the town clerk.
No, I'll actually send you an email, sir.
Next speaker, please.
My name is Chintan Desai. I live at 313 Alliance Circle in Harmony. And I'm really here to talk about two main topics. I want to echo what my fellow Harmony resident said and what Prasad said, and that is, Harmony did, you know, we did have a meeting with them last week, very last minute. As a matter of fact, if it wasn't for our friends at Chesney Glen, we wouldn't even known that we need, you know, we needed to meet with them because, you know, they did, they never contacted us directly, despite the fact that we asked them to. So that's, that's one concern that I had. The second concern is the right-in, right-out out of 55. Although it helps Chesney Glen, and I'm glad it does, and also the, the proposed development community over there, it dramatically and drastically increases and makes the traffic worse on Turner Creek, where most of the kids are going to school. I have a nine-month-old daughter. I plan on putting her in that school, and, and I seriously have concerns now. So, look, I, you know, I get that communities have to grow, you know, in order to progress as a town, as a whole, but we have to grow in a sensible way, right? You know, Cary, I don't, you know, Cary was voted some, one of the safest places to live in the US, right? I don't know whether it was this year or not, but I know it was. And it wasn't because we are going around developing, build, you know, developments all over the place, or however we want to. We have to plan out how the city is going to look, right, and how the residents are going to take to that. So those are my two main concerns. So I appreciate you guys hearing us, and please take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Jason Barron, 112 Coat Bridge Circle here in Cary. I'm here to speak on, on behalf of the project applicant in the Herndon-Burt rezoning. We were here in August, and the two overarching themes that we heard when we were here in August, when the council deliberated on this case, were traffic on Turner Creek and safety. And we have made revisions to the zoning conditions to directly address both of those points. First, with respect to safety, we've eliminated the northbound turn movement out of the site onto Highway 55. There was concern expressed with respect to people crossing through traffic to start moving north, so we've eliminated that and basically said we're either going to do a right-in, right-out, or right-in, right-out with a leftover. Second, with respect to the traffic on Turner Creek, as is noted in the staff report, you know, the, the TIA was done early in this process, improvements were not recommended at Turner Creek. To the extent, extent there is a problem, it exists as of today, and it doesn't exist in the eyes of the engineers whom the Town of Cary commissioned to study that intersection, certainly not related to our development. Notwithstanding that, we heard loud and clear that folks in Harmony are unhappy with the way traffic is flowing coming out of Harmony, on Turner Creek, and onto 55. So we have made a commitment, a significant financial commitment, to provide a right-bound, right-turn lane coming out of Turner Creek and onto 55. That will be a committed right-turn lane that will essentially allow people who want to move forward and take a left to not be stuck behind buses who can't take a right on red. And that's really, from what I understand from folks in Harmony, and, you know, kind of second, second-hand nature, that sounds like it's the primary issue they have, is that the buses essentially stack up onto Turner Creek, so providing by that, by providing that turn lane, we believe we're addressing that issue. With respect to the sidewalk on Wake County Public Schools property, we have provided Harmony with a letter saying we are committed to doing it. We can't provide a zoning condition. We just can't do it. We're not permitted. We talked to the town, we town legal about it, we talked to staff about it, we can't provide a condition that basically says we're going to construct a sidewalk on Wake County Public Schools property, but we're doing that. That sidewalk is not for residents of our development. It's exclusively for the benefit of Harmony residents, again, because we heard that safety was an issue. And we're doing those three things, and they are going to be part of this development. As it relates to traffic, I want to go back, if, you'll, you'll note in your, your project staff report that 68 single-family dwellings are the basis for the traffic generated with this, because it generates more than 110 townhome trips. So if you're, if you're talking about traffic, townhomes are a preferred product type. If you're talking about impact on schools, townhomes are a preferred product type. Finally, with respect to density, if the council continues to be concerned with the overall density, I think my client would be willing to go back and study that issue further to see if we can get closer to five dwelling units per acre. But again, we believe that, and, and we would entertain doing that for 30 days if the council would have it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Anyone else for public speaks out? I see no one. I'll close, public speaks out. And we'll move to the consent agenda portion of tonight's meeting. This is item D, for the benefit of people watching our meeting on TV. We're going to take a moment to review the consent agenda item. Excuse me. Please keep in mind that one vote approves all of these items. On the consent agenda, we have minutes, bid award, setting a public hearing for owner-initiated annexation, appointment to the Cary Fire Department Relief Trust Fund Board, staff salary grade and title changes, NAR's request pertaining to Mooresville Parkway construction, resolution for issuing general obligation bonds, recognition of 911 funding, recognition of a donation, tax report, ratifying a bid withdrawal request, and Carpenter Neighborhood Park. Now, I've heard earlier in this week from some council members who have advised that they would like to remove number 12, which is the Carpenter Neighborhood Park item from the consent agenda for discussion. So we'll discuss this issue later when we get to agenda item F, which is our discussion items. Would council members like any other item pulled for discussion?
Actually, I'm sorry for the last-minute request, but could we go ahead and pull the Friars Gate subdivision Mooresville Parkway construction? I just want to hear staff explain to us why this is in the town's best interest to do this.
And this is, just to be clear, item six?
Six, yeah.
Item six. Okay, so we are pulling item six and item 12 for discussion? And would council members like any other items pulled for discussion? If not, I would entertain a motion.
So move?
Second.
If the motion is second to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item six and 12, discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And the opposed, motion carries unanimously. This moves us to our public hearings. The same rules apply for public hearings that apply for public speaks out with one exception. Speakers now have five minutes for their comments. First, public hearing request to design Hillcrest Cemetery as a historic landmark. We'll hear a presentation from our staff and Mr. Gary Roth, then we're going to open the public hearing, after which we may take action. This time, are you going to make a presentation?
I'll begin, yes.
Okay, yeah. Very good.
Thank you. Good evening. This is a request to consider historic landmark designation for Hillcrest Cemetery and related town code amendments. This is a two-part agenda item. In part one, we'll present Hillcrest Cemetery for your consideration as a landmark, and then hold a public hearing. If after the hearing council votes in favor of landmark designation, then we'll move to part two of this item, which is the related town code amendments, for your consideration at that time. But first, I'd like to just run through the process about what it means to be a landmark and how you become a landmark. When a property is designated as a landmark, it means that the property is recognized as an important historic resource worthy of preservation. It's an honor to be a landmark. Changes to the property are subject to design review by the Wake County Historic Preservation Commission, and if the property is subject to property taxes, in this case, Hillcrest will not be, but if it is, the owner may apply for an annual deferral of 50% of the property taxes, as long as the property retains its significance and integrity. The process for becoming a landmark is, and it follows the North Carolina general statutes, a landmark application is prepared and submitted to the Wake County Historic Preservation Commission, HPC. The HPC reviews the application and also sends a copy to the State Historic Preservation Office for their comment. The HPC holds a public hearing on the application and then votes on the recommendation. And then the HPC forwards the recommendation, along with the application, to the Town of Cary for review, a public hearing, and a final vote by the town council. So that's where we are tonight in that process. And Mr. Gary Roth, who is the president and CEO of Capital Area Preservation and staff to the Wake County HPC, is here tonight to permit, to present their recommendation. After tonight's presentation and public hearing, council may take action and vote on the proposed ordinance designating Hillcrest as an historic landmark. So now I'll turn it over to Mr. Roth.
Thanks, Anna. Good evening, mayor, Mayor Protem, members of the council. First, I want to bring- First, I want to bring you greetings from the Wake County Historic Preservation Commission and Chairman Ed Morris, who regrets he could not be here this evening, but wishes you his best. Tonight, we will ask you to consider the Hillcrest Cemetery. It's located at three lots comprising a total of 4.87 acres, and they are 608 and 610 Page Street. If you should decide to designate the property as a historic landmark, this will be Cary's I'm going in the wrong direction.
Slides are just a little bit confused. Excuse us.
Okay. The cemetery is surrounded on all sides by wooded residential neighborhoods, but is only a short walk from downtown. You'll recognize that in a very short space diagonally to the upper right, you'll see the Cary Arts Center and the basic downtown area. So, it has the appearance of being isolated, but it's very close to downtown. The town of Cary acquired most of the cemetery in several transactions during the 1960s and 1970s, making it the town's only municipal cemetery. Although the town's ownership only dates back some 50-plus years, the cemetery's earliest burials date to 1840, when the property was privately owned and known as the Cary Cemetery. Okay. The cemetery is bounded at each elevation by trees and shrubs. It has a relatively level topography, with the middle of the cemetery being the highest point. Throughout the cemetery, there are mature oak and pine trees and other small trees, such as crepe myrtles, hollies, and dogwoods, that provide a serene, canopyed, and park-like setting. The Hillcrest Cemetery is divided into 11 rectangular sections by paved roads that run parallel to one another and perpendicular to Page Street. The grave markers are lined linearly and face east, as is traditional, in each of the 11 sections. There are approximately 1,200 interments. The earliest grave markers are located in Sections A, B, C, D, and E. Hillcrest is the final resting place of some of Cary's most prominent early citizens. Members of the Jones, Page, Templeton, and Guest families are interred here, as is Dr. S.P. Waldo, Cary High Principal Marcus Baxter-Drye, Ann Nancy Jones, Harrison P. Guest, Dr. James Templeton, Esther Ivy, Russell O'Hader, Alfred Buck Jones, and R.S. Dad Dunham, as well as 15 of Cary's past mayors. The cemetery has a combination of grave marker forms.
Are you thinking of Harold? Is that what you're thinking about?
They were all looking at me.
Yeah. I said "past" mayors, not the current one. The cemetery, I was afraid that was going to happen. The cemetery has a combination of grave marker forms and materials that date from 1840 to the present. Prevalent headstone forms found include tombstones, obelisks, box tombs, pulpit markers, diode-based tabin socket, government-issued military markers, and lawn-style markers. Now, just to take a look at the one on the left, the Page Monument, this is actually a di base and capstone. I point it out, though, because it's the Page family. And, as I've already mentioned, so many of the names of folks who are buried here resonate, I think, with us today, because we encountered them. It's the Page Walker Hotel, or the Guest Ogilhous, or Park for Dad Dunham. It goes on and on. Probably one of the sweetest or most charming of the various grave marker forms represented in the cemetery is the bust of Mary Ray Yarborough. That's on the left. She was the young daughter of Dr. and Mrs. Frank Yarborough, and their home still stands on Academy Street today. She died in 1936 at nine years of age. And on the right is a much earlier stone, and this is the stone of Susan R. Raven. And she died in 1873, and she's the wife of the Reverend A.R. Raven. Some of you may be more familiar with the name of the Esther Ivy House. The Esther Ivy House on Academy Street is now, it's a bridal shop. It was earlier, it was the home of the Ravens. And Dr. Raven was the first pastor of the First United Methodist Church. The best decorative examples are the pedestal tombs with urns and vaulted roofs. Or are those. Another form found in the cemetery's oldest section are those of Mary Susan Guest. She died in May 31, 1884. G.W. Guest died June 6, 1907. And Harrison Guest died June 25, 1919. It's Harrison Guest who is the, we think today, but we know about the Ogilhous, it's the Harris, it's the Guest Ogilhouse. This is the Harrison Guest for whom that home is named. So, there's a connection to a continuing property in Cary. These headstones, and for some, burial footstones, are made of granite, marble, and form concrete. The largest grave markers date to the late 19th and early 20th century, and the ones with the most artistic merit have decorative symbols such as drapery, crosses, doves, roses, hands pointing up or down. I don't like the idea of "down," but a lot of them pointing up. And lamps. Also prevalent are symbols associated with the membership of the deceased in business organizations, clubs, fraternal organizations, and the United States military, such as the example on the right. This also is an example. This is kind of, you see the draping. It's likely that this gentleman, and of course, you know, we think about the Balcom House, which is up on High House Road. There's probably a relationship there, and this gentleman probably served in World War I. But you also see the Masonic symbol, which is on this grave. So, this gravestone represents a lot of the symbolism which is in the cemetery. And the family plots scattered throughout the cemetery are denoted by cast-iron fences, low-brick walls, flat-top granite coping, and a really special one, this is the Jones family. It has a unique stone wall mortared with white rocks around the Jones family plot at the cemetery's southeast corner. Some burials occurred without being recorded, as many early purchases of the cemetery plots were transacted with a handshake rather than issuance of a deed. This can be seen in the unmarked, roughly carved soapstone markers. There are also a number of soapstone markers that have crudely scribed names and dates that appear to be attributed to an unskilled engraver, perhaps even family members. So, the stones in the cemetery, as you can see, run the gamut from the really elaborate to the very, very, very simple. And just before closing, I want to thank the staff of Town of Cary, and particularly the Clerk's Office folks, for the excellent job that they do in maintaining and organizing the cemetery over the years. And it really is a credit to them that we are here today at this point. The significance of the state of the cemetery. The Hillcrest Cemetery, located at 0608 and 610 Page Street in Cary, Wake County, North Carolina, is locally significant as the final resting place of men and women who made contributions to the town of Cary's social, economic, political, religious growth and development during the 19th and 20th centuries. The cemetery is the town's only municipal cemetery, and has burials that date from 1840 to 2012. Noteworthy among those buried here are members of the Page and Jones families, Marcus Baxter-Drye, of course, associated with the Cary Academy, Alfred Buck Jones, who was a diplomatic representative to China, Dr. James M. Templeton, and Russell O'Hader. The Hillcrest Cemetery is, the staff recommends, the Wake County Historic Preservation Commission staff recommends that the Cary Town Council designate the Hillcrest Cemetery located at 0608 and 610 Page Street, Cary, as a Cary historic landmark, and adopt the associated ordinance. At its May 14, 2013, meeting, the Wake County Historic Preservation Commission unanimously recommended that the Cary Town Council designate the Hillcrest Cemetery located at 0608-610 as Page Street as a Cary historic landmark.
And that concludes our presentation, and we'll be glad to answer any questions you might have after the public hearing.
Very good. At this time, I'll open up the hearing and invite the first speaker forward to approach the podium. Anyone to speak at this public hearing? I'll close the public hearing, open it up to council members for questions, comments, motion.
Mr. Urha, yield the floor to you.
Mr. Roth did a wonderful job. I think that was fantastic piece of Cary history. Thank you for adding your comments. I just had a list of a few other names that I could briefly read through, names that might be familiar to you also, might be familiar to Cary residents as they look at street signs, as they...
As long as my name's not on there.
Your name is not here. Although, it should be noted that one of the mayors buried there is your uncle, is Mayor Bond.
Yes.
No, we have Adams, Jordans, and Martins. We have Grays, Rogers, and Yates, Edwards, and Evans, Turners, and Upchurch, Holloman, and Herndon, Ivies and Waddells. We have the Ivy-Waddell House. We have Guest's, as Gary mentioned, and Matthews, of Matthews House fame. Dr. Hunter, Dr. Yarborough. We have Godbold and Young, Harrison and Maynard. We have Waldos and Roots. We have Pages and Walkers also. And there are over 50 Joneses. If you have an interest in Cary's past, you need to pay a visit to Hillcrest Cemetery. And if you have an interest in Cary's future, I think you need to do the same thing, and spend a moment to reflect on the lives of those who, the remains are buried there, people who built Cary into what it is today. So, I'd be happy to make a motion, but Mrs. Adcock, I believe, had her hand up to speak.
I would not deprive you of that pleasure, Mr. Urha.
Well, it would be a privilege, then, for me to move that we designate Hillcrest Cemetery as a Cary historic landmark.
And I'd be happy to second that.
There's a motion and a second. Discussion.
I just wanted to echo Mr. Urha's comments. As always, Gary, I really enjoy it when you come here. I learn something every time, and it's just fascinating. I typically don't visit cemeteries. I have a thing with death. But, I'm going to go to this one. This is just too neat. It really, really is. But, Ed, your comments, I really, really appreciate those as well. Very educational, as always. And thanks to you as well. I really appreciate all your work on it, so.
And just a little quick story to add to Ed's. Mayor Bond, when he was mayor, his property, he lived on Harrison, and his property backed up to the cemetery. So, his children and his nephews played in that cemetery. And so, we, so we recognized a lot of the older dates, didn't know the significance of everything, but we realized how old that cemetery was. Other comments?
Yep. I think that it's worthy to mention that every Memorial Day, there's a wonderful ceremony there. It's kind of forgotten in the county. It seems like a lot of the newer places get all the recognition, but I encourage everyone to kind of put on their calendar for the Memorial Day services that are held at Hillcrest, and to remind people that a lot of our veterans are also in that cemetery. It's a great place.
Other comments?
That I'm anxious to get there.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Is there a motion on the related cemetery ordinance amendments?
I'd be happy to make that one. I move approval of related amendments to Chapter 10 of the Town Code.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
We now move to Item E2. It's a public hearing for 13REZ 25, the stiff property. Ms. Spearman of our staff will present this request. We're going to hear from the applicant, then we're going to open the public hearing, and council will not take action on this item tonight. Instead, we're going to refer it to our Planning and Zoning Board, who will make a recommendation to council, and will consider this at a future date. Ms. Spearman.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is a public hearing on a request to rezone about 48 acres that's located on Greenhope School Road and Sears Farm Road. The site is on the south side of Greenhope School Road. It's about 1,500 feet west of NC 55. This is closer aerial view. To the east of the property is Highcroft Village. To the west is the Highcroft PDD subdivision. And then, to the south is the Reserve subdivision. The existing zoning of the property is residential 40. This slide also shows, in the blue areas, the planned development districts that are in the vicinity that include the Highcroft Village, Friar Highcroft, and then, in the green, to the south, you can see the Reserve subdivision. The proposed zoning for the site is transitional residential conditional use. The proposed zoning conditions include land use restricted to detached dwellings and neighborhood recreation. The maximum density would be 3.6 units per acre. The minimum lot size would be 6,000 square feet adjacent to the Highcroft PDD, which is to the east, and 9,000 square feet adjacent to the Reserve, with the exception of the areas adjacent to a stream buffer, which would be 7,000 square feet. The remaining portions of the site not covered by the conditions would maintain the 5,000-square-foot minimum lot size of the transitional residential district. There's also a 20-foot Type B perimeter buffer adjacent to Highcroft Village north of the stream buffer. This is an exhibit that illustrates the zoning conditions that are related to the minimum lot size and the buffers. You can see where the area for 6,000-square-foot lot size is here, the 9,000 square feet in this portion adjacent to the Reserve, and then, there's a stream buffer in this area. So, even though this area is adjacent to the Reserve, the lot size is 7,000 square feet, there's a larger distance in this area. And there's a zoning condition for a 20-foot Type B buffer along the border with Highcroft I do need to make a correction. In the staff report, there actually is an error in looking at the required buffer widths. The required buffer adjacent to the Reserve is 30-foot Type B buffer, and there is a required 20-foot Type B buffer adjacent to Highcroft Village. So, we'll make that correction when that moves forward to the Planning and Zoning Also, the proposed zoning conditions include traffic mitigations that were included in a traffic study that was prepared by the, or that was required for the rezoning request. That includes westbound turn lanes on Greenhope School Road, at Sears Farm Road, and at the site access point, which would be across Greenhope School Road from Cozy Oak Avenue. And also, there are some conditions related to ingress and egress lane configurations at all of the site access points. The property is in the southwest area plan. This map shows a graphic of the plan as it was adopted in 2004. And there's a Note 2 that applies to the property, shows that this area of the site is designated for medium and low-density residential use. Note 2 specifies that the medium-density use would be the predominant use of the site, with low-density adjacent to the Reserve. The overall density of the subject property, which in this map includes this portion of the site, the overall density is 3.6 units per acre, which is consistent with the land use plan. However, the proposed minimum lot size in this area adjacent to the Reserve along this portion is 9,000 square feet, as included in the current zoning conditions, which is slightly smaller than that that is envisioned with the land use plan. I just wanted to point that out to you. And this is the current plan graphic from the land use, the southwest area plan, and you can see here that since 2004, there has been some additional development with the adjacent area, Highcroft Village, and then you can see where some open space is being continued through this area. According to Cary's GIS maps, a portion of the site is impacted by stream buffers. Field determination of these features would be made as part of the site plan review process. There is a proposed greenway shown on the site through the southern portion. When completed, this greenway will fill in a gap in our greenway system that's between the Reserve subdivision and Highcroft Village. The Cary transportation plan shows Greenhope School is a major thoroughfare, and Sears Farm Road is a local street. At the time of the site plan, a 50-foot streetscape would be required along Greenhope School Road, since it is the major thoroughfare. Road, since it is the major thoroughfare. The land development ordinance does not require a streetscape along local streets, so there would not be a requirement at that time along Sears Farm Road. The nearest transit route is a triangle transit route that runs along NC 55. This is a map that shows in yellow the properties that were notified of the public hearing. We did receive a number of protest petitions. The parcels in yellow were, are valid protests that were received, and this is, would be a valid protest petition overall. The petitions were submitted for 21 properties. The concerns that were expressed in those conditions were basically three concerns. Of those 21, 14 mentioned an insufficient buffer as a concern. One also included a comment that the density was too high. Another included a comment opposing extension of Enfield Ridge, which is a public street, which in Highcroft Village that stops to the property. And then there were seven protest petitions that, that were silent with regard to reasons for the protest. And that concludes staff's comments. I'll call on the applicant for his comments, and then staff will be available for questions.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protem, and council members. I want to thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak this evening regarding the rezoning on the Stitt family property. My name is Chris Rowley. I'm speaking on behalf of the applicant, and I work at 2301 Crescent Green Drive in Cary. The Stitt family has owned this property for a long time. During that time, they've watched the property around them develop for the past 10 to 20 years. And now they would like that same opportunity. Hopefully, to make this as easy a process as possible, the Stitts are proposing to a rezoning that is consistent with the town's approved southwest area plan. First, I'd like to follow up on a few items from Ms. Spearman's presentation. She pointed out that we were proposing a 9,000-square-foot lot in certain locations adjacent to the Reserve, whereas the town's plans call for 10,000-square-foot lots in this area. We will be formally committing to, to creating 10,000-square-foot lots in that area so that we are consistent with the southwest area plan. Second, I'd like to reemphasize that we have committed to all the traffic improvements that the Town of Carey's hired consultants recommended that we do for this project, with the exception of those improvements that are already committed by others and are already in process of being constructed. Next, I'd like to briefly discuss our interactions with the communities that surround the Stitt property. In addition to the required neighborhood meetings, we have held, held several non-required meetings prior to submitting our rezoning to the town. We used the neighbors' feedback from those meetings as the framework for our initial rezoning. The Stitts are surrounded by several different neighborhoods. The Reserve to the south is a low-density community. Highcroft and Highcroft Village to the east and west are two medium-density communities. During our meetings, each of these communities had different goals and priorities, and we've worked hard to meet, meet each of those residents' desires for our, as we developed this property. We've met on several occasions with leaders from each community. As a result, we have a list of 23 items that we've been asked to commit to as part of this rezoning in order to garnish support from the neighbors. I've passed out a list of those 23 items that you should have. The list that I provided generalizes those 23 items. We are currently in the process of working through with the neighbors the details of how each of those items would be spelled out, and Pulte is committing to eat all of those items in writing. I believe that arrangement will be reached on these items over the next couple of weeks. The commitments we've been asked to make range from specifying the types and quantities of materials on the front of our homes, special landscaping and materials on corner lots, front yard landscaping requirements, buffers that exceed town requirements, and also exceed the, exceed the buffers that were provided by any of the adjoining neighborhoods, funding certain traffic calming devices in our neighboring communities, and ensuring that Enfield, a road that's currently in Highcroft Village, when it runs, when it connects through the Stitt property, that it will not be a direct connection back out to Sears Farm Road or Greenhope School Road in an effort to not let that become a cut-through for traffic. Town staff have already hinted that several of these items cannot be offered as zoning commitments. However, we are still willing to make private agreements to assure the neighbors that we will develop this project as we have committed. In closing, once again, I want to thank you for your consideration of this project. I would ask that each of you vote in favor of this project because it's consistent with the town's southwest area plan, and it will allow the Stitt family a zoning that has already been afforded to all of their neighbors and all of the properties that surrounded them. Thank you.
Just one comment I can make. I haven't seen the specific list of 23 items. I did review, generally, we reviewed a list of concerns, and as Mr. Rowley indicated, there were some of the items that could potentially be turned into zoning conditions, but there were, the majority of the items, I think, were, were details that we would not, that we felt would not be appropriate for specific zoning conditions. And as this moves forward, we would certainly be looking at those specific items and giving feedback on those.
Thank you. At this time, we'll open up the public hearing, and I would invite the first speaker forward
Hello, and thank you for your time this evening. My name is Philip Armand. I live at Highcroft Village, just east of the site. And I was asked to speak on behalf of the neighbors in Highcroft Village. I live at Talton Ridge Drive. And we are supportive and are willing to withdraw our protest petition so long as the items that Pulte has addressed, these 23 items, are spelled out in a fashion that are beneficial to us and that we agree upon. We feel we're very close to doing so, and believe that Pulte's been very open and honest, and as have we, and we think we can reach an agreement here within the next several weeks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, good evening. My name is Scott Hoyt. Thank you for your time. Very quickly, I've done a handout here. In the conditions of the zoning request, I have called Sears Farm Road a local road with no buffering, to offer no buffering along that. I live in Highcroft, Phase Two, and I back up to Sears Farm Road. Between my house and Sears Farm is a 30-foot buffer, worm buffer with beautiful plants. The road looks fantastic. It's a heavily traveled road for people getting to and from Sears Park. It's a heavily walked road, which is fantastic. And you can't walk down without passing seven people walking their dogs. It is a fantastic place. And it's really, it's really a fantastic place because we have wall of trees on one side, and we have the beautiful Stitt property on the other side. We understand that that's probably gonna happen, but what we simply request is that there's some consistency in the area, that they have to put in the same buffer that we have on the other side of the street to maintain the quality of aesthetic and the aesthetic integrity of the area. As for calling Sears Farm, a local road is, as soon as that goes in, it's gonna qualify based on traffic patterns as a connector. I mean, there's no doubt about it. Based on the traffic scores and the level of service scores given to everything that comes out of that area after this goes in, and the other 500-plus homes that are being developed in that area as we speak, they're all Es, Bs, and Fs. I've included that in my packet along with the scores and what they mean. So sure, we can say they don't have to do it because in the LDO, it doesn't say they have to. But I think in the spirit of the LDO, we want to maintain aesthetic integrity. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Brad Reitstrom, and together with my wife, Rhonda, we own the property at 805 Bell Arbor Court in the Reserve subdivision along a boundary line on the southwest portion of the subject property. You have in front of you a developer's interpretation of what might be permitted by the intent of the southwest area plan. You also have the Planning Department staff analysis of the same. I am here to augment those views with information that should not be overlooked as you consider and discuss whether or not to rezone this property as they requested. I'm also representing the views of six out of six of the property owners along Bell Arbor and Edgemore Streets in the Reserve subdivision that are adjacent to the southwest area of this property. We want to be clear. We're not opposed to development. We are not opposed to the Stitt family being able to sell their property. We're not opposed to the Town of Carey expanding its tax base. We are simply asking that the town council consider all aspects of the intent and the spirit of the southwest plan, including those that I'd like to outline in a minute when deciding whether or not to support the request as it's submitted. On the map in the southwest area plan, there was a deliberate choice by the staff to employ a two-color scheme related to the subject property. On the version I was able to pull up online, it was white, but on here, it looks like it's just lighter, to designate LDR in a darker color that was designating MDR. Anyone that can look at the map that's on your screen can clearly see that the lighter color has been applied to a significant portion of this property. A spatial analysis of the area designated in a lighter color reveals it to be about 23% of the overall area that's affected by this rezoning request. Now, I'll admit that no spatial analysis done on a derivative map like I did is perfect. I'll also admit that there's probably a conceptual element to the line that you're looking at on that chart. But if you, if you consider those items and realize there's probably a little bit of error in the analysis that I did, somewhere between 20 and 25% of that property is in an area designated similar to the Reserve. If the town council accepts the proposed rezoning conditions and the interpretation of the no MDR within 100 feet of the Reserve, then if it uses that, it's a driving consideration. This will lead to a situation where a very high percentage of that portion of the property, of the buildable acres within that portion of the property, will be developed with lots that are 5,000 square feet. Those lots will barely meet 50% of the minimum standard for LDR development. And in this request, there is no area, at least in the formal request, that even met the minimum standard for LDR. As effective homeowners, we are strenuously objecting to the rezoning request as it's been submitted because the conditions do not adequately meet the objectives of the southwest area plan, which include a provision and an intent, we believe, to provide an LDR buffer adjacent to the Reserve and a transition to MDR. If the intent of the southwest area plan was limited to a criteria that uses 100 feet of separation between the Reserve and the MDR, there is no way that the staff would have created a line that incorporated 20 to 25% of the area of that piece of property. There are simply easier and better ways to communicate a stipulation like that with the intent of those type of constraints that would not have looked like that. In addition, we have to point out that we're not alone in this view. As recently as a few days ago, the Planning Department staff analysis included a reference, and I quoted from page seven when I downloaded it from the town's website, to the portion of the site designated LDR. Okay? I think that means that they looked at the area of that subject property and also viewed as LDR up until a few days ago. It's not just 100-foot distance requirements, is my point. Another fact for the council to consider in evaluating this request is that the average lot sizes adjacent to the southwest property boundary, six total properties, are about 16,500 square feet. The developer has submitted 9,000 square feet as the lot size adjacent to those properties. And this doesn't feel like a transition to us at all. That would put them at 54% of the average size that we have in that area. Even at 10,000 square feet, which has been mentioned tonight, that would put them at 60% of the lot sizes that we have. Okay? And would put them at 40% of certain lots. So that doesn't feel like it meets the intent or the spirit of a transition zone for the Reserve neighborhood. My final point is there's an alternative precedent for the council to consider in the Highcroft Village development, and you can see how those lots have been laid out there as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Tim Driscoll. My wife and I live on 702 Edgemore Avenue, adjacent to this development. My concern is for traffic and safety in our development, specifically on Edgemore Avenue. The TIA methodology did not look at the traffic that's missing, the intersection that's not gonna be improved, 55 and Greenhope School Road approaching it from the west. Right now, there's a single lane that turns left north towards RTP in 540, and there's a combined lane that goes straight left and right that goes south towards Apex. Right now, that traffic is cutting off in Sears Farm Road and taking the, taking the direct route south on Edgemore Avenue and going out, going out through our development. Our development is 25 mile an hour speed limit on that road. There are at least a dozen bus stops on that road, and traffic, if you want to put your police out there, you could pick up 50, 60 tickets in the morning. You've tried to stop and slow down the traffic before with the little monitor that tells you how fast you're going. You've sent police out there. Nothing is stopping this, and it's only gonna get worse. People are right now backed up at the intersection of 55 and Greenhope School Road, trying to make that right-hand turn, and it's only gonna get worse as this development puts traffic on Edgemore and the succeeding developments to the west. There's probably, in the planning stages, 1,000 units to the west. The improvements on Marso Parkway, which should cut off a lot of the traffic going north on 55, making that left-hand turn that they won't be making on Greenhope School anymore. But that's really not gonna improve the situation on Greenhope School Road because that one single lane that goes left, right, and straight, you only need one car turning left to stop the traffic going right. All that traffic's coming through our neighborhood right now. The developer has offered to put in speed humps at the Greenway Crossing of Edgemore Avenue. He's offered to put in stop signs, and somehow, that's not allowed under the current rules and regulations of Cary. A stop sign on Edgemore and Briardale, a stop sign on Edgemore and Briardale, two different locations, and a speed hump at the, at the Greenway Crossing would go far to encourage a slowdown of traffic and push them back out on to Greenhope School Road, which is supposed to be a collector road. We're not even supposed to be a collector road. And right now, if you wanna get out there at 6 o'clock, you'd have five or six tickets at 60 mile an hour, and they're not slowing down. And that's only gonna get worse. They know the way through. My daughter cuts through my neighborhood because she doesn't like to sit at the light on Greenhope School Road. I don't see why we can't have those conditions that the developer's willing to do, slow down that traffic and improve or not hurt the fabric of life on, on Edgemore Avenue. You have that Greenway, one side of that Greenway comes out from behind the fence, and somebody moving 60 miles an hour is gonna clip them. It's just a matter of time. As the Greenway opens up across the street, when it's built by the developer, there'll be more traffic on that Greenway, and that's not gonna help anybody out. And one last comment. Transition from an LDR to MDR, the definition in your rules is one to three units per acre, which works out to be anywhere from 40,000 to 14,500. And the minimum requirements are 10,000. We have one lot as a transition area that meets the minimum standards. That doesn't sound like much of a transition, transition to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Anyone else for this public hearing? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing, open up to council members for questions. Ms. Adcock.
Thank you. Well, I applaud the developer for trying to come to some agreement with neighbors this early. Well, I applaud the developer for trying to come to some agreement with neighbors this early on. We don't see that very much, so that's always good. Sounds like there's more conversation and work to be done. But I do have a couple of questions. Ms. Beerman, and it's interesting when the applicant's representative spoke, the first thing I kind of jumped out was the funding for traffic calming because I know we have a policy for that where the citizens' fund half and the town funds half. Can that be a zoning condition? Adding traffic calming, and if so, how does that work out? Because normally, it's a 50-50 split with the town and citizens.
I think that's something that we would need to evaluate those conditions more closely as a staff. My understanding is those are more issues that would be brought up at the site plan level as opposed to at the time of the rezoning when you're focusing on uses and density and impacts. But we could certainly take a look at that to determine if that would be an appropriate condition at the time of rezoning.
I know that at rezoning, we can look at safety, you know, of traffic. And so that seems relevant to me. You're obviously the expert. But the other thing was the gentleman, the last gentleman who spoke, Mr. Driscoll or Drissel, I think his name was, said that something about the addition of stop signs, which of course helps with traffic calming. And his statement was that those weren't allowed per our ordinance. But can you tell us a little more about that? Is that true?
I would need to look into that closer and get with their transportation staff to see how those issues are resolved.
And then I had one more.
Isn't DOT usually involved in those decisions, though? That's usually the difficulties we have.
DOT roads, certainly.
But aren't these stop signs internal to the development?
These are internal. This is not a state road, right?
Yeah, that's my question.
He was mentioning the intersection of Briardale and Edgemore, and I'm not sure exactly what kind of stop signs he'd like, if he wants them reversed or if he'd like a four-way stop there. But we have put some four-way stops in locations or three-way stops in locations and have had some great success. Actually, done both, three and four. So it's probably worth considering. I don't know that it needs to be done necessarily in conjunction with the rezoning because whether this gets rezoned or not, it sounds like it's already an issue. And it may be something that the council wants to initiate in cooperation with the neighborhood.
But that's certainly something that we can look at as we look at the zoning conditions that the applicant offers and evaluate those to give our analysis of what would be appropriate.
And I had one question that's not related to this, and it may just be an optical illusion. But when you brought up the very first slide and you were kind of walking through the characteristics of the site, and I thought you showed a stream buffer down here in that LDR portion. And then later, when you showed greenways, it looked like there was a greenway going through that stream buffer. Did I hallucinate that? I mean, can you show us that?
Let's see.
So it was the very first slide where you kind of walked through, here's how it looks, and you talked about where the stream buffers are. And then when you do the greenways and trails, it really looked like it was in the buffer.
We allow the greenways in the outer 50 feet of the buffer.
Okay, and I was just asking to see that.
Yeah.
Because it kind of looked in the middle, but again, it was.
There is a buffer in that area. The line that you see on the greenways slide, let's see that. So here you can see the buffer. And again, these are field determined. I mean, this is for GIS. There's a field determination made at the time of the site plan. When you move to the greenways plan, it does show that connection through there, but that's a very conceptual line.
I got you. So that would all be taken into it.
The point of that being that the two endpoints would be connected.
Because, of course, we're all about connectivity of our greenways, and we definitely want that segment to be built.
Yes.
So you would just say be built around the stream buffer but not inside of it. Those were my main questions at this point. Thank you, Mayor.
Other questions?
Well, I'll just go ahead and articulate, for the benefit of the applicant, what my concerns are. From hearing everybody and looking at this case earlier, my first concern is going to be that the land use plan designation of low-density residential is honored so that people who made decisions to move into this community based on looking at a land use plan can feel secure in that decision. The second one is looking at Green Hope School Road and that intersection there because I know it's already really bad out there in the morning, and obviously, this project has great impact on that. And then the last thing is I have concern about the buffer along the existing community, particularly Highcroft Village, because of the note that was in the land use plan. So I applaud you for working with Highcroft Village and you all coming to some good terms. But I'll be looking at that, making sure that they're buffered appropriately. I'm surprised to see that was a type B buffer rather than a type A. So maybe finding out what the justification is for B versus A or maybe looking at that again. That would have some reservation. And then I do think that the resident from Highcroft, who talked about the need to make sure that Sears Farm Road is aesthetically pleasing for, you know, whatever impact you have on that road. I think that's a very, very good point. We want to make sure that whatever we put in raises the community, continues to raise the community. So I think that's something that Pulte will want to be looking at.
Okay. Other questions or comments?
I would just add, good points by both Ms. Robinson and Ms. Hock. I totally agree with you about the Sears Farm Road thing. That's key. You don't want to have anything disjointed and looking out of place, you know? But I'm optimistic. I mean, I don't know when the last time we had an applicant or developer show up before the public hearing started with 23 conditions already they're willing to, you know, agree to. So to me, it seems like we have an applicant that's very willing to work with the community, and the community that seems very willing to work with the applicant. I'm optimistic that when this comes back, some of those key details have been worked out. We've got one of those win-wins for everybody. But so I'd just be interested to see how this goes along, moving throughout the process, what the Planning and Zoning Board thinks of it. But I'm optimistic on this one.
Yeah, I was actually going to say the same thing. The first thing that I thought when I saw the list of 23 was, wow, that's a great list. I hope that they get through a lot of these before it goes to P and Z because that's one thing council really stresses is about the process. We want to see the same thing that the Planning and Zoning Board saw. And I think that that's just another note to take to heart for the developer. The other line item that I'd like to just bring up is the LDR to MDR. I think Ms. Robinson made a great point. And I hate for that, not for all of those homeowners that are adjacent, to not feel the comfort that something that was on the plan is going to be abided by and not having any of those homes at the minimum of 10,000 square feet. That was the minimum. It actually defines 10,000 to 40,000 square feet. And I think that would go a long way as well.
Okay. Ms. Sierra?
I can echo just about what everybody has said already. The transition's certainly very important to me. I think P and Z is very good at dealing with transitions. So I'm really eager to see what they have to say as far as that's concerned. But there is one thing that I have to mention that hasn't been mentioned so far. It seems like with this rezoning, with every rezoning we get lately, there's a required historic house on the property. And there is, again, with this one. So that's the Sears House, which is over 100 years old. And I know there's efforts in your staff report dealt with that. I appreciate those comments. But I hope something could be worked out, a little more done toward the preservation efforts of that house before we see it again.
Okay. Anything else? All right. We'll forward this on to the Planning and Zoning Board and wait for their recommendation before it comes back to us. Thank you, Ms. Beerman. We now move to item E3. It's a public hearing, 13 REZ 27, the Pritchett tract. Ms. Grant and of our staff will present this request. We're going to hear from the applicant, and then we're going to open the public hearing. Council will not take action on this item tonight. Instead, we're going to refer it to our Planning and Zoning Board. Ms. Grant.
Thank you for your consideration. It is a request to rezone approximately 52.25 acres located at 6405 Holly Springs Road. Subject property is shown here, highlighted in yellow, located east of Holly Springs Road and to the west of Campbell Road. Close-up aerial view shows the subject property is partially wooded and partially cleared. It is developed with a single-family residential home. The property is located in the southeast area plan. The property is separated almost in half by a stream buffer. And the portion of the property that's located adjacent to Holly Springs Road has a land use plan designation of low-density residential to medium-density residential with a maximum density of five dwelling units per acre. And then the portion of the property that backs up to homes along Campbell Road has a designation of low-density, very low-density residential to low-density residential. The portion along Holly Springs Road includes a plan note that says that the area includes some natural features previously identified through the town's open space and historic resources plan as a high priority for preservation. It suggested that future development consider using clustered development designed to preserve some of the rural views along Holly Springs Road. And note number five pertaining to the low-density residential portion recommends single-family detached only. That residential infill development and redevelopment using public utilities, water and sewer, should generally have lots that are at least a quarter acre in size with larger lots of a third to a half acre or more adjacent to the existing very large, very low-density homes to create a reasonable transition. The note goes on to state that properties without public utilities should have lots that are an acre or more in size. The existing zoning is residential 40. This shows you the adjacent mixed-use overlay district for Swift Creek, just to give you a sense of proximity to that adjacent activity center. The proposed zoning from the applicant is two different zoning designations, transitional residential conditional use along Holly Springs Road, and then the eastern portion of the property residential 12 conditional use. For the tract one along Holly Springs Road, the applicant has proposed to limit the use to detached residential, community garden, and/or private neighborhood recreation areas, to set a maximum density of three dwelling units per acre and a minimum lot size of 7,000 square feet. The ordinance allows a 5,000-square-foot minimum lot size in transitional residential, and so 7,000 would exceed LDO standards. Furthermore, the applicant has proposed that lots directly adjacent to the Campbell Woods neighborhood, which is located to the south, would have a minimum lot size of 10,000 square feet. There's a cemetery on the subject property. The applicant has proposed a condition that they would not seek to relocate that existing cemetery. And this shows you the proximity of the private cemetery on the property. Additional conditions are that the developer or current owner will preserve and restore the existing barn on the property and provide a minimum of 10,000 square feet of open space for community gathering area in the vicinity of that barn. And that the future HOA shall maintain the structure and open space. And this is a photograph of the barn that's on the existing property. For the portion of the property that backs up to the Campbell Woods neighborhood or Campbell Road neighborhood, the conditions are that the use be limited to detached residential, community garden, and/or private neighborhood recreation, and that the density be a maximum of 1.5 dwelling units per acre. A traffic study was conducted and completed in December. The recommendations from that traffic study are contained in your staff report. And the applicant has also proposed conditions that would address all the suggested improvements in that traffic report. Property owners within 400 feet of the subject property were notified by mail of the proposal. The property was advertised in the Cary News and posted on January 16th. I did receive a phone call on Tuesday that signs along Holly Springs Road were missing, so it was reposted just before the snow hit on Tuesday. The property was also posted at the end of Fordland Drive, and that sign remained in place. There is a valid protest petition. The properties highlighted in yellow show those properties that are eligible, and therefore, supermajority vote would be required at the time of a decision on this. Properties in blue were outside the area to be considered for a valid protest petition. A summary of the neighborhood concerns in the protest petitions were primarily street connectivity, traffic and safety, the size of the proposed lots, and environmental impacts. I wanted to just point out a very, very important issue that staff has received numerous comments on, and that's Fordland Drive, which is in the Campbell Woods subdivision immediately to the south of the subject property. As you can see here, the subject property, Fordland Drive ends in a cul-de-sac. However, the public right-of-way continues to the property line. There is a lot of concern from the neighbors about future connectivity of this road. So that has been an issue that staff has received numerous phone calls and had meetings with the neighbors on. The neighborhood was recorded in 1991. It does show this as a future connection. Shows that cul-de-sac is a temporary cul-de-sac. When you go out there to the site, however, it feels like residential neighborhood ending in a cul-de-sac. There are notes on the recorded plat that indicate that this is a temporary cul-de-sac and that when the road connects in the future, the property line for Lot 45 will align with the public right-of-way. But it's very apparent that a number of the neighbors on Fordland Drive may not have seen this, may not be aware of it. But the right-of-way does go all the way to the property line. Community feedbacks also included two calls from nearby property owners who support the request. And I wanted to point out that this property does have the attention of the Wake County Historic Preservation Commission regarding historic features on the property. The Franklin Jones House, shown here, and the original Franklin House in this picture. There's more information about these historic structures in your staff report, and staff's prepared to answer questions about the properties. But we have made sure that the developer is familiar with the historic commission and has met Gary Roth, so there is ongoing communication to address these structures. Holly Springs Road is designated as a thoroughfare on Cary's transportation plan. The current right-of-way is approximately 70 feet, and the future section would be 100 feet. Sidewalk would be required, and these would be, half of the right-of-way widening, road improvements, and sidewalk would be required along the frontage of the subject property. Cary's Parks Recreation and Greenways Master Plan shows a future greenway trail following the creek through the subject property. And I've referenced the creek, which does require field determination and stream. It sounds as though there is a high likelihood that this does exist on the property. But again, these are issues that will be dealt with at the time of site plan review. At this time, I would like to ask the applicant to come forward. Following the public hearing, the applicant and staff are available for your questions.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm JW Sherman with I D S. I'm here representing the proposed developer for this site. On September 5th of last year, we had the neighborhood meeting at Churchill on Holly Springs Road. There were a number of residents in the area attended. Predominantly, it was from the Fordland Drive area and the Campbell Woods Road homes that exist to the east. At that meeting, there were comments and concerns, as outlined by DeBert, that related to traffic, school capacity, lot sizes, natural areas for potential endangered species, plant and wildlife, stormwater, and connectivity to Fordland Drive. It was a very informative meeting where we shared process, options, and the developer, we took notes, how can we help move through these items and help mitigate some of these concerns. Following that, we had studies completed and had a second meeting in December of last year. And in response to the traffic, as outlined, the TIA was conducted. From that report, there were mitigation measures that were identified, and the developer has committed by zoning condition to complete those as part of this process. As it relates to school capacity, as we're all well aware, that's not something that a developer can really address and/or the council. But Wake County, with its bond money, will address the capacity issues at a future date. As it relates to lot sizes, on the land use plan for the town, it has this area LDR to MDR with the western half. That potentially will allow up to six units an acre. The developer, by condition, is limited to a maximum of three. On the eastern, as identified, it's VLDR to LDR. As identified, what you could do from one to three, the developer has capped at 1.5 units per acre. Years ago, the town of Cary built a sewer line in this area, and that sewer line goes right through the draws identified on your map there where the stream buffer areas are. This was an investment by the town of Cary for capital improvements, understanding the need for potential sewer in this area. As part of that, we believe that the town's land use plan identified this area as such for LDR and MDR. for LDR and MDR designation with public utilities. With public utilities in the area, if you look to subdivisions that are to the east and beyond Holly Springs Road, those areas have developed with consistent lot sizes and/or densities along Cary Parkway, Lockmere Area, Winston Ridge, that would be consistent with what this developer will be proposing with this site. As for the comments relating to natural areas for endangered species, the developer contracted with U.S. Fish and Wildlife Resources to complete an environmental survey of the site. The results of that survey did not indicate anything related to threatened or endangered species on this tract. As it relates to stormwater, the development would be required to protect the streams as indicated, and the streams as such would be identified with a future subdivision plan that would abide by all town of Cary regulations in order to protect the watershed. Fordland Drive, as commented by staff, was a substantial concern and comment that night. There's a belief that there will be substantial traffic increase and cut-through. The TIA did investigate that, and the results of that report could be identified with staff to council. However, with the traffic connection issue itself, the developer feels that while it's a town of Cary requirement, and the residents don't want it, we're in a situation here now, how can we help mitigate it? If there's a way we can help with that connection through this process, the developer's open to do whatever we can do to help the residents' concerns with that, and we look forward, moving forward with this case to get directions to see how that may best be handled. Historical structures were identified on the site. When staff with Gary Roth went out and looked at the property, I believe they had identified three structures, one being the barn, and this situation right off the bat before anyone evaluated that the developer had committed to save the barn without anyone's asking to do so. The barn is kind of a unique structure for the site. It's something that they want to adaptively reuse and incorporate for the residents of that community, to allow a community garden to be planted around the site, and allow inside seating area to enjoy the space of the barn for the future, a gathering spot for this community. The rural farmhouse that you see that was identified on the second slide, that house right now sits very close to Holly Springs Road. And with the TIA, the requirements are going to widen that road there in addition to sidewalk being added. With that widening, it puts that house right at the property line, very close to it, such that there's really hardly any front yard of any substance left. However, with the comment from staff, you know, having an interest in the structure, the developer has said that they would be willing to work with anyone that would be willing to relocate that structure off-site in order to preserve it for future use while they retain the barn. With that said, we believe that this request is consistent with the town's land use plan. The Pritchett families had this land in their name for several generations. They've been good neighbors to the adjacent owners in that area for a long time. They're not looking to upset the adjacent property owners. They would like to provide for an orderly transition for future development and meet the town of Cary's plans. And we believe by doing so that this developer is trying to preserve some of the past and conservatively develop the property in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Getting the nod that that concludes staff's presentation. So at this time, I'll open up the public hearing, and I'll invite the first speaker to the podium at this time.
My name is Rilda Jones Pritchett, and I'm the owner of the farm at 6405 Holly Springs Road, and I talked to the town council last year about the removal of the Cary Parkway extension. I would like to thank you for removing that Parkway extension, since this has enabled me to finally be able to do something with my land. I have watched as land around me has been developed, but I could not do anything because of the restrictions of the Parkway in the past. My family has owned this farm for over 100 years, and I would like the surrounding neighbors to know that after much deliberation, my family decided to pursue the MI Homes proposal. We had multiple offers that included multifamily, assisted living, commercial of development, patio homes, and townhomes of much, much higher density for more money, but we decided that we did not want the high density or the townhomes on our property. We felt that the MI Homes proposal to build only single-family quality homes was most consistent with what was in the surrounding neighbors, and also consistent with the Cary land use plan. Since Cary has already put the sewer line through the center of the property, and the water line comes up to the edge of the property, we do not need the R40 designation. The proposed development is no different than any other development in the general area that uses public utilities. I would also like the council to know that I tried to donate the old Franklin House, the historic preservation plan, to the Wake County Historic Preservation Commission back in June of 2009. However, they never moved forward or did anything with it. Both I and the developer would like to see the old Franklin House preserved in some manner, if possible, off-site. We would also be willing to have the Jones farmhouse moved, since it will only be a few feet off Holly Springs Road and too close to the road. If moving the houses is not feasible, I have already talked to a nonprofit to try to salvage what we can from the houses. I'm pleased that MI Homes plans to preserve the horse barn and also the cemetery on the property. These features will help preserve some of the rural heritage and historic character of the area. In closing, I feel the rezoning proposal is in line with the Cary land use plan, as well as a reasonable and fitting use of the property. I also feel that the proposed development would be a benefit to the town of Cary and to the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Jeremy Medlin. I'm with MI Homes of Raleigh, 1511 Sunday Drive, Suite 100. MI Homes has been part of the town, part of the community for years. We've built many communities here. We've built many homes, and this proposed development would just be one more opportunity for us to stay here and do it yet one more time again. When we initially started looking at the site, we went at it and approached it in a manner that would be the minimum amount of density that we thought was possible, given the surrounding area, given the adjacent neighbors. We took that into account, and that's what we presented to Rilda Pritchett. Keep in mind that the density that we're proposing barely meets your land use plan right now. I mean, it's set that low. In the same breath, you've already got a sewer outfall that runs through the heart of the project. It's adjacent to city water, and it's got a significant amount of roadway improvements that would be tied to the project, which we're more than prepared to facilitate, but it's a fine line on density versus infrastructure cost and the dynamics to make it work. But we feel very comfortable with what we propose to you, and we'd like your support on that. JW also spoke and mentioned that we hosted two neighborhood meetings, and they were well-attended by the adjacent property owners, and the bulk of the concerns that we heard were the Fordland Drive extension. And we were as transparent as possible and explained to those folks that we just could not commit to anything that the current town of Cary ordinances did not allow. So we're sort of in a rock in a hard spot here as to what we can do with the Fordland Regarding the historical preservation master plan that was mentioned in the application, we are committed to preserving the barn. If you've driven down Holly Springs Road, you can't miss the barn. It's beautiful, and to my knowledge, there's only a few in the area that are left. I think it would be a great amenity that we could cultivate into a community garden and a play area, and it would be a very nice feature for people to utilize in the community. As for the old Franklin House, I wanted to pass out these. There's a few more photos of the old historical house there on the site. In my review of the house, it seems to me that it would be problematic to save the home or move it in one piece, as it's being supported by about five different trees that literally hold the house together. We are committed to work with the Pritchets to see if we can locate a nonprofit organization that could utilize the house or possibly find a home for it. The cemetery that is there in the heart of the project would also be preserved and would be surrounded by an open space area. It would be loved and manicured and given the attention that it deserves. Again, I appreciate your time this evening, and I'm hopeful for your support as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor and former council members, I'm Robert Maynard. I've been around here quite a while. I live at 6200 Holly Springs Road, which is right across from the property that we're talking about. I am for the proposal, I am for the proposed development that is planned for this property. There aren't many large tracts like this around Cary anymore, and it will be developed. I would rather have a housing development than a school development, which would be and would create lots of traffic. I'm 79 years old, and I've been in, seen Cary expand in all directions, and particularly down Walnut Street. Cary High School was relocated to the present site in 1959 and 1960. Property my father owned and we farmed. We had no choice, Dad didn't, to sell the property, because if he hadn't, it had been condemned by the county and taken anyway. I have been told that Wake County is looking at this piece of property to develop another school, which we do not want. More traffic and lots of school activity, that would be coming and going all the time. Fordland Drive extension into the property at the intersection of Holly Springs Road and Cary Parkway, which is a requirement of the City of Cary, and rightly so. There are no fire hydrants on Fordland Drive. There will be many hydrants in the new development that could be used to supply a warning case of a fire on Fordland Drive. I am on the board of the Swift Creek Fire Department, and going into Fordland Drive by way of the new entrance would be more accessible than going all the way around by Camel Road to get to Fordland Drive. The last fire hydrant going down Camel Road is at the entrance of Tarrington subdivision, and Fordland Drive is a long ways from that hydrant. If you will remember, the big fire over in Dutchman Downs several weeks ago, the house burned down completely. There are no water hydrants in that area, and the fire trucks had a hard time getting in with water. The house was located at the end of a cul-de-sac, which made it very difficult for the big fire trucks to get in and turn around and deliver water. In my opinion, this development would be an asset to our neighborhood, much more, much more than a school. I have looked at a development on the other side of Cary at Holland Farms, which is located on Green Level Church Road, and this builder has done a very outstanding and a nice job. I am in, I am for this development. I think it would be an asset again to our neighborhood, much more so than a school, particularly with all the traffic and the stuff going on at the school all the time. As stated earlier, I'm all for it. Thank you very much. We appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Mayor and members of the council, and Mayor Pro-Tim Gale, good evening. My name is Margaret Phil Campbell, and I reside at 2816 Campbell Road in the evening, and at my office at 2804 Campbell Road during the daytime hours, so most of my life is spent on Campbell Road. I am speaking to you this evening on behalf of myself as well as our community. First of all, we would like to thank all of you for allowing us to share our thoughts on the proposed zoning request by Ms. Rilda Pritchett. Her property being the 50-plus acres bordered on the west by Holly Springs Road where Cary Parkway tees into Holly Springs. We have all gathered here tonight to offer a counterproposal, and at this time, I would like to ask each person supporting this counterproposal to please stand. Thank you. Each of you should have a copy of the counterproposal, several maps, and copies of my presentation. I've been living on Campbell Road for 50 years, and my husband has been there for almost 70 years. We have raised our children here. They have attended school in our community. We have grown vegetable gardens to feed our family, and still do, had space for flowers and trees, raised cows, and our children have had ponies and horses to ride. One of the most special times for my children and me were the times we walked to the creek behind the farm, to the farm behind our house, this being the Pritchett Farm, which joins our property. The children, as well as my father, located many wildflowers, lady slippers, and Jack-in-the-Pulpit's, just to name two. Just before Christmas, we would walk to the stand of over 100-year-old long-leaf pines to collect pine cones. These are just a few of the special treasures that I want you to know about, that are hidden on this undisturbed farm land, which will be destroyed with clear-cutting the farm and developing it into such small lots. Last but not least, my husband and I have a plant nursery on our property, which would be significantly impacted by foot traffic cutting through our property, as well as the welfare of the people who might choose to cut through, breaking water lines, someone falling and getting hurt, products being stolen or abused, or just a few of the concerns for us. The Pritchett Farm property is now zoned R40, which is what most of the properties on Campbell Road and Holly Springs Road are zoned. Most of us living in the community now are fortunate to have had one acre of property or more. The proposed zoning for the Pritchett Farm is totally out of character with the surrounding properties. The proposal for 7,000-square-foot lots to back up, or maybe a little more, as they stated tonight, to back up to one-acre lots without any transition is inconsistent with a way of life valued by residents already living in the community. I believe that you have a smaller version of the map, identical to the one I have here, and it clearly shows the areas outlined in pink that are at least one-acre lots. There is, however, one subdivision in our area that we believe is a template for density for the Pritchett Farm, that being Tarrington subdivision on Campbell Road. I have known Rilda Jones Pritchett for many years, and while it is her right to sell her family farm, we believe that the development can be done in such a way that the lifestyle we have chosen is the same lifestyle that future homeowners would choose. Our family and many of our neighbors that are here this evening have spent over 50 years helping to build and shape a community from farm land left to us by our families. Tonight, among the information you have been given concerning this hearing, you should also have petitions from residents living in the community who are opposed to the rezoning and the Fordland cut-through. You should also have the formal protest petitions or a record of them from at least 30% of the property owners within 100 feet of the Pritchett Farm. We would appreciate your help this evening in accomplishing what we believe to be a better fit for our community by considering our counterproposal. Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, members of the council, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Ken Raiber and I live at 7001 Fordland Drive and I have lived there for about eighteen years right now. My handout's being passed around in the interest of time, I want to just go through it very quickly so you know what I'm passing out. The cover sheet is really simply, my role here tonight is to talk about connecting Fordland Drive, the connectivity issue, and some of the concerns that the residents have and how we want to express those, for your consideration. Because as you've heard, we really don't want to have Fordland Drive connected to the development. In the package, first is the cover sheet, second is one page, just the one pager, I believe, you know, councils need one page. If I can't get it down to one page, it's not worth it. The rest of it gets down into what I can use without my glasses. So it's a little bit larger print and a little bit more information. The last part of it is paper clipped together and it's four photos. And the staff has done an outstanding job of putting some of the aerial photos and some of our concerns together. Because what we're concerned about, and we see it, you see it on the map, the map you're looking at right here, is the appearance is that Fordland Drive is a stub right to the development. When I bought my land eighteen years ago, it was clearly a cul-de-sac. It looks like a cul-de-sac, it feels like a cul-de-sac, if you look at the two pictures in there, it's a cul-de-sac. That's where the school buses turn around, emergency vehicles turn around, trucks, it's easily done. We had no indication. There is no physical indication, no signage, anything that would give us an indication of anything other than when we bought our property and there we were buying into a residential subdivision that was going to have and continue to have limited access. Don't get me wrong, we're not opposed to the development, we support the development. I've worked in economic development with municipalities for thirty-four years. I support it. What we are concerned about is the density of the development and the transition between Fordland Drive and seven to ten thousand square foot lots. We think part of that can be preserved with some negotiations with the developer, as well as maintaining not connecting Fordland Drive. The town has a traffic study. The traffic study says we can expect an increase of five to six hundred cars a day, or fifty to sixty additional cars during the peak hours. That's just morning and afternoon, the peak hours during the day. And this is a less-than-mile road, it's about nine-tenths of a mile road. I run this road as an avid runner. I see five or six cars. My runs are not short, they're an hour to an hour and a half. And I want to talk a little bit now of that little bit of an amenity of living on Fordland Drive with very little traffic and a very close relationship with all the families there. It is very family-oriented. We have lots of young children, people are in the streets every afternoon, well, every afternoon except when it's seven degrees, you can find people out with bicycles, strollers, skateboards. Families are out with small children. That's the culture, that's the environment of Fordland Drive, that's what we have, that's what I've enjoyed for eighteen years. The subdivision's twenty-seven years old. And so other people have enjoyed this environment for a long time. Adding fifty to sixty cars at peak, or five to six hundred additional cars during the day, would eliminate that. It would make it unsafe for pedestrian traffic. If you look at the two pictures that I have in here, one shows the cul-de-sac, one shows it says, "No Outlet." And that's my truck that's parked there. And you'll notice that as it's parked there, one wheel is on the edge of the road, the other, the mirror on the right side is set to clean out the mailboxes, and the mirror on the left side's at the center line. The road's only about twenty feet wide. So to have any pedestrians in there unless you know what's in there is dangerous. The road would become dangerous to pedestrians. Fordland Drive will become a cut-through. It will become a shortcut. Campbell Road is currently a shortcut between Holly Springs Road and Tryon Road. We have narrow road construction, no sidewalks, multiple S-curves, these are blind curves, these are curves that you can't see around and what's coming, and you can generally be surprised by a car parked in the road or a family walking their dogs. Grade changes and elevation changes are significant. That means steep, long, winding roads with limited sightability. If you're not going twenty-five miles an hour in that road, you're really going too fast because you can't possibly stay right of center. I've had numerous indications where I have to stop my truck to let the car go by. There is parking on the street. Most service trucks don't park in people's driveways and that immediately turns Fordland Drive into a one-lane highway, especially when people have guests over or other families over. It makes it very difficult. In addition, we are increasing the traffic on Campbell Road if we have five to six hundred vehicles a day. That's going to increase not only the traffic, the bus stops along Campbell Road, and those bus stops are in the dark. The children stand on the side of the road, and when you get to Tryon Road, there is no right turn.
Mr. Raiber, I'm so sorry to have to interrupt you, but your time has expired. Do we have your entire comment?
You have my entire comment, and I would just simply say, we request your consideration. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of Cary Town Council. My name is Melvin Tucker and I live with my wife and our three cats at 5929 Fordland Drive. I want you to know there is life after government's, government service. I spent forty years in local, state, and federal government, in both appointed and elected positions. I served in the federal government as an FBI agent, in state government as a college professor, in local government as a police chief in four cities, including two in North Carolina, Hickory and Asheville. I retired from the city of Tallahassee, Florida, as their chief of police after fifteen years. Also served one four-year term as an elected city council member in Morristown, Tennessee. I want to talk to you, or talk with you briefly, about two different theories that are in competition with each other when city governments talk about smart growth. One theory is called CPTED, C-P-T-E-D. That stands for Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design. Some of you may have heard of that already. Florida State University Professor C. Ray Jeffrey developed the CPTED theory after years, literally, of studying the relationship between the design of city streets and the design of buildings and their relationship, that relationship, to citizen safety. His book, reporting on his findings titled Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design, was published in 1971. His research was replicated by the National Crime Prevention Council in 1997, and they concluded that Jeffrey was indeed correct. Crime will be reduced and citizen safety will be enhanced if city streets are designed with heavy use of dead-end streets and cul-de-sacs. Why? Because criminals just don't like to risk one, only one escape route. That's a fact. Notwithstanding the proven success of CPTED, a competing smart-growth theory started to emerge in the 1990s called connectivity. Connectivity theoretically reduces travel distances, it creates more route options, and reduces traffic on main or major arterial roads. However, that's accomplished by reducing the number of cul-de-sacs and dead-end streets. And is accomplished by connecting neighborhoods with each other, these connecting roads. It's my understanding that Cary, at some point in time, I don't know when, adopted the connectivity theory as your smart-growth strategy. I'm not here to question your motivation in doing that. I'm sure it was done with the best intentions in mind. However, as we've learned, sometimes there are unintended consequences to policy decisions. MI Homes has told, have told us that they intend to seek your annexation, as they already said tonight, of the Pritchett Farm property so they can build some homes there. And my neighbors and I are not opposed to MI Homes developing the Pritchett Farm property. However, we, as you heard, want to keep it R40 zoning, and let me tell you, we are very much opposed to building a street to connect the development to Fordland Drive. Why? Very simply because connecting MI Development to Fordland Drive will increase the risk of crime to our neighborhood. It will increase traffic flow on Fordland Drive by your own study, from seventy cars a day to six hundred cars a day. It will increase the danger to those who want to walk their kids, walk their pets along Fordland Drive, ride their bicycles and all those other things, and it will increase traffic accidents on both Fordland Drive and Campbell Road because neither of those streets were designed to carry heavy volume of traffic. So what we're doing is asking you to make a decision. Is it more important for you to create more route options? Is it more important to decrease travel distances and reduce traffic volume on Holly Springs Road? Or is it more important to you to ensure that the citizens who live on Fordland Drive and Campbell Road can continue to enjoy the great quality of life that we currently enjoy, free from crime, where we can walk our pets, walk our children, and ride a bike along the street that's only traveled by our neighbors? I'll close, real quickly here.
Mr. Tucker, I'm sorry.
But I'm asking you to do two things. Drive down Fordland Road, look at it, and second thing is look at the attachment to my remarks, and if you do that, I'm sure you will make the right decision. That is no connectivity. Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. My name is Georgina Werner and I live at 5901 Fordland Drive. My family and I live on the corner of Fordland Drive and Campbell Road. My family was the first home in the Campbellwood subdivision. We have lived there for twenty-seven years. It's late, so I'll do the math, we moved in in 1987. So I was surprised tonight when Deborah showed the, set aside for the end of Fordland, because when we moved in there, it was to be a cul-de-sac. And in fact, when our house was under construction, there was no street in front of my house. Our house was actually constructed using a service driveway to the back of our property, and it was only two weeks before we had to close on our mortgage that our street was finished. At that time, we learned that the street would be called Fordland Drive, and the street was only five hundred feet long. Over the years, we've grown the neighborhood from our home, home, to forty houses, but it's always remained a cul-de-sac. We bought land there to build our house because it was going to be on a cul-de-sac. We have no desire to have it connected to the Pritchett Farm development, which ultimately is a connection to Cary Parkway. For the first five years that Fordland Drive was in existence, it was actually a private street. The DOT assumed responsibility maybe twenty or twenty-two years ago. It's my understanding now that the town of Cary, with their connectivity policy, would like to turn my quiet cul-de-sac into a thoroughfare. If you consider the comments of Mr. Raiber and Mr. Tucker, to go from the sixty or seventy cars per day we have on the street to the estimate of the town of Cary of six hundred cars per day, that's a ten-to-fifteen folding increase in the number of cars. And I am concerned about the safety aspect of it. For twenty-seven years, my family has enjoyed a safe Fordland Drive. I walk my children in their strollers on that street, I now walk my grandson on that street. We walk our three dogs, I'm an avid cyclist, I cycle on the road, and others on our street jog and run. And we do this in relative safety. We have no sidewalks, we have no curves, and there are no markings on the road. And again, I know some of my neighbors have already mentioned that this evening. Fordland Drive will be unsafe if it's connected to the Pritchett property because of the fact that people will cut through, they'll go too fast, and as others have alluded to, people don't stick to their side of the road just because of the undulation in the streets, that people take as much street as they need until they come upon a car, then they have to move over. The town of Cary wants to connect the end of my cul-de-sac to the proposed Pritchett development. It doesn't make sense to us, it really doesn't. We on Fordland Drive do not need the connectivity. We on Fordland Drive do not want the connectivity. We've lived for twenty-seven years with a cul-de-sac without any issues. You are now putting my family's safety at risk by connecting my quiet cul-de-sac to Cary Parkway. I'd like to request that the town of Cary and the Planning and Rezoning Board allow our cul-de-sac to remain as it is. MI Homes has told us, and they reiterated it tonight, that they do not need the connection. I ask you to kindly respect the request of my family and my neighbors to leave our street as it is. We hope to spend the next twenty-seven years living on Fordland Drive in peace and quiet and on the cul-de-sac that I thought I was moving into back in 1987. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
My name is Elizabeth Costin, and I'm speaking for my husband, John T. Costin, and myself. We strongly support the proposed rezoning of the property located at 6405 Holly Springs Road, known as the Pritchett property. Our property is located at 3120 Campbell Road, and it borders the Pritchett property for one thousand five hundred and thirty-two feet, or close to one-third of a mile. This is our home, and we have enjoyed the privacy of it for twenty years. And we plan to continue to live on that property, right where it is now, the house where it is now. While it may not be as private in the future as it has been in the past, we are now looking forward to meeting neighbors who may move into this proposed project. The Jones family has owned and maintained the property located at 6405 Holly Springs Road and paid taxes on it for about a hundred years. It's private property now owned by Rilda Jones Pritchett, who should be able to sell it at a fair market value for development. The developer has proposed a project which is reasonable and does not appear to impact negatively on the value of nearby properties. To require it to be modeled after the Tarrington project would create a financial challenge for any developer and would be, which would be difficult, if not impossible, to overcome. And it would dictate a lesser value for the Pritchett property and a negative impact on the owner of that property. Again, we strongly support the proposed rezoning for the Pritchett property located at 6405 Holly Springs Road. Thank you for the opportunity to speak and to offer our support for this project, John T. Costin and Elizabeth Costin.
Thank you.
I'm Gary Roth, Capitol Area Preservation. I just want to say a few words on behalf of the Franklin House. You've all received, I believe, a letter from Ed Morris, who's the chairman of the Preservation Commission. I think he's outlined very, very well what the condition of the house is, as well as some of the history. I want to add a little bit to the history, just for your information. But I can't stress enough, as I think he did, the significance of this house. You know, I'm thinking about, I wish the Ogles were here tonight, I'm thinking about the condition of their beautiful home in downtown Cary. And there was a time when we could have looked at that and said, "It's a lost cause, it's hopeless." And now it's a, it's an official landmark, but it's also a physical and sort of a psychological and sociological landmark for Cary. The Pink House, we all think of that. So I never am deterred when I see a house in bad shape. This one is structurally sound, it is surrounded by four trees, and it's got even a branch sitting on the roof. You probably have all those photographs. The four trees aren't holding it up, though, it's holding up itself. It's a timber frame construction, which is very, very rare. I want you to, I want everyone to understand that if this house, if you should annex this property, this house will be the second oldest house in Cary. Think about it in this, what Mr. Jones, one of the former owner's brother, told me, is that when they were very, very young, the family, the Jones family, bought the Franklin House. The Franklins lived on the property before the Jones family. The Joneses moved it by mule and rolling logs to the back spot, and they lived in it until they built the house in the front. The people buried in the cemetery are all Franklins, they're not Joneses. So the Franklin roots really, really, very, go deep here. Think about it in a way that young men from this house may very well have gone off to war in the Mexican War, they may have gone off to war in the Civil War, they may have gone off to war in the Spanish-American War. That's the history that this building has observed. And I'm not coming to you today with a particular solution, I know Mr. Morris has advanced one. I can tell you since that letter was written, that a private individual would be very qualified, has also come forward- has also come forward and expressed an interest in the house. I'm just basically here, not to speak for or against the development, but to speak for the house. And I hope in any way that you can do that, that you will remember this house and consider it and ask for some consideration of it. And that is not necessarily to keep it there, we're not really even asking that, but to give the opportunity for it to go either for public enjoyment or for private use, but to give it a future life, because it is a very, very important part of Cary's history. And we don't have that many, and this is one of the really special ones. It may not look it now, but the potential is really, really great. And so I just want to just put up, I just want to speak for the house. That's all I want to do.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is George Young, reside at 2612 Cooley Drive in Raleigh. I'm here representing MI Homes as well. I wanted to address a couple, a couple of points. One, I certainly appreciate Mr. Roth's comments. We are absolutely committed in saving the structure, if at all possible. If someone, and Dr. Pritchett mentioned that we had talked with some nonprofits, and she had actually reached out to the Historic Preservation Group years ago to try to have that house relocated, certainly would be interested in doing that. When we first met with Dr. Pritchett and started working on the property, you know, one of the things that was most important to her was keeping, maintaining the character of Holly Springs Road. Our discussions with her were very focused on density. They were very focused on, one of the things that spurred on our conversations was that she was down here fighting to have the Cary Parkway extension eliminated from going through her property. And one of the reasons for that is she didn't feel that it was going to be, that she wanted to see high density developed on the property. So when we started meeting with her and having discussions about a land plan, the things that she wanted to see preserved were the barn, obviously, the cemetery, which we're committed to doing as well, but also eliminating any, any potential of townhouse or apartment development or congregate care. And so, and she, she had all that in mind with her neighbors, you know, at the forefront. She said, you know, "We don't want to do anything here that will upset the apple cart. We've been here for 100 years, we're not going anywhere. We want to do what is right for this area and for this property." What we have proposed at MI Homes, we've proposed what is absolutely on the low end of what is called for in the LDO. Density-wise, it's, I think, as low as, as low as we could get. We did look at the model for the Tarrington community. That is on a two-lane county road. What we're looking at here is at the end of a four-lane, you know, median-divided Cary Parkway, two different classifications, one's out in the county and one's obviously going to be brought forward to get it into the Town of Cary. So we are, we're here to ask for your support. The connectivity issue with Fordland Drive, I did stand up in front of the neighbors and did tell them that, you know, if there was a way to have that connection not be a part of the plan, we're okay with that. The issue there is your connectivity policy. We're required by the supplemental of our plan to submit something that actually abides by your plan. We could not come forward, I believe, with, with something that did not show that connection. And, you know, we're certainly willing to work with the Fordland Drive neighbors and the town to eliminate that connection. But I would, I would implore you not to allow that, that single issue to stall the potential for what is a great development that will be very much within the character of Holly Springs Road and Cary Parkway areas of town, and we sure appreciate your support, and thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Mr. Mayor, council members, my name is Joseph Dupree. I live at 7,002 Fordland Drive, adjacent to the Pritchett property, with my wife Teresa, a graduate of Cary High School, a current teacher at Cary High School, and educator of almost 40 years and the love of my life. We have, we built our home at this address about eight years ago after living in Atlanta for a good period of time. We had owned the lot for a number of years before that. We, we love the area. It is a really nice neighborhood, and everyone that I've talked to on the street is very much opposed to the connectivity. It, it will have a very negative impact on the neighborhood. And it's, you know, there are things with connectivity that become a benefit, obviously fire, the fire issue, but everyone that built their homes there knew this was in the county at the time they built them. They picked this area because of what the area is. What we're hoping from you is that you will use the power that you have, and you are powerful people. My father was a judge. He made decisions every day. You do the same. You make decisions that affect people. Anyway, we, we are very much opposed to the connection of Fordland. The other issue that we would have is that we were initially told in some of the meetings that there would be a buffer between the existing homes and the development. In the communications that have gotten or received from the Town of Cary, we don't see any mention of a buffer, or if there is a buffer, and there's no mention of how that buffer is to be finished, landscaped, natural, whatever. The homes that are along Fordland are very low density. You're going to something that's somewhat higher density. It will have an effect on the values of the existing homes. I think anyone that says contrary to that just doesn't understand development. But I think the plan that they put forward is a nice plan. But I do think that there should be a significant buffer between the existing homes, and that that buffer should be of such a manner as to offer some privacy. Between my home and the home next to us is probably in the range of 100 feet. Now, do I expect a buffer of that amount? No, obviously. But, but I think it's, 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 there should be a buffer. And like I said, you know, like a judge, you folks have power, you're charged with responsibility to take care of decisions for a lot of different people here. I know Dr. Pritchett, she's the gynecologist from a 94-year-old mother. I know a lot of my neighbors, and this is a difficult, y'all have a difficult task, and I recognize that. But I would ask you to take the steps that you can to protect our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Anyone else for this public hearing? We'll close the public hearing and open it up to council members for questions. Gee, I have a list. I want to go first. Never get to go first.
Go first, yeah. Go on.
You go, Mayor.
Process for eliminating connectivity, which is our ordinance. What is that process?
That would take an ordinance amendment, a land development ordinance amendment. So I'd like to-
So we have no process currently to do that? We would have to amend our-
Well, unless, unless there is-
You can initiate it separate of this rezoning.
Right.
Right.
But I'd like to point something out, if I may. The connectivity was established by Wake County in 1991. So they have right-of-way stubbing to the property line. The road does not go all the way to the property line. The road stops short about 115 to 120 feet where the cul-de-sac is on Fordland Drive. What our requirement would be at the time of site plan for the future developer would be to provide a stub to their property line. And this would make logical sense at the time of site plan review. If they were not showing the potential for future connectivity to the southeast, north, and west, it would not be meeting our subdivision plan requirements. Staff would deny the plan, and the applicant could ask to bring the plan to town council. So there is, there is a process where that can be considered. But as far as a zoning condition, it would not be an appropriate zoning condition to prohibit connectivity.
Right, but we've eliminated, we've waived connectivity requirements on- Site plans, right?
Site plan.
Yeah, not reasonably.
When they came back.
Right, okay.
Is that quasi-judicial, though?
Yes.
That's where I was going with that. Okay. Quasi-judicial. Okay, then, then the other question would be, if we went through a process to eliminate that connectivity, would we still require a second entrance? And would that be on Holly Springs Road, or we would just say we have one entrance?
I thought there were two in the, there's two in the staff report already.
Well, there's discussions about two access points that were required to be submitted as part of the traffic analysis. Once again, those are not locked in because that has to have DOT approval, has to be evaluated at the time of the site plan. But, you know, the applicant is, but that, yeah, that we would still be looking for connectivity per the ordinance to the north, southeast, and west.
So since you brought up the TIA, that brings up another question. TIA says 500 to 600 trips. Tell us what that means.
Going to ask Mr. Jensen from our-
Well, actually, I know what it means, but I just want to-
[laughing]
It means that project will generate 500 to 600 trips going in or out. Doesn't have anything to do with Fordland Drive because it's not that sophisticated. Is that correct?
Correct.
Correct. He's not incorrect.
I'm sorry. I'm just trying to pull the transcript.
I know it's got to be scary if it did connect, to think that 500, 600 cars are going to come down that road.
Oh, yeah.
Just want to make sure that everybody understands that's not going to happen, but-
It could.
Correct, yeah. It could, but- Theoretically could, but, yeah, that's over, that's over a daily period, it's not- I just want to make sure what, everybody understood what that point was and what that meant. And then, then my last one was on buffers. The last gentleman talked about buffer. Do we usually have buffers between similar residential types?
I can help you with that.
Okay.
There are, there are two proposed zoning designations. Let me pull this up. The transitional, let me get the zoning map up, that'll, that'll make it a little bit more clear. Here we go. Transitional residential conditional use, where the applicant has proposed to have a minimum lot size of 10,000 square feet adjacent to the Campbellwoods neighborhood. When there's a development where the lot sizes for the overall subdivision are less than 8,000 square feet, there is a buffer requirement, a 30-foot type B buffer. Even if they've got a couple of lots down here along the southern property line that are 10,000 square feet, then they're still required to look at what the minimum lot size is for the overall neighborhood. So if they've got less than 8,000 square feet, then they're going to need to look at a, they're going to need to look at a 30-foot type B buffer. Now, this development-
Tell us what a type B buffer is.
A type B is a semi-opaque buffer.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, thank you. The R12, residential 12, is a minimum lot size of 12,000 square feet or greater. That's when a landscape strip is a requirement rather than a buffer. The landscape strip planted to a semi-opaque standard could be on an individual lot, it would not have to be in common open space.
Okay. And then my last question, and then you guys get a turn. Getting back to the first question, the process of eliminating connectivity as a desirable outcome for a lot of the people that spoke. Unless there's a quasi-judicial hearing for whatever reason, we won't see it after rezoning. So what assurance can we get, since this is not a rezoning condition, where we can have impact on that outcome? I don't know if I even said that correctly, but-
How can we, how can we ensure as a-
Or do we have, I'm looking at our attorney.
It's not, it does not pertain to the zoning.
Right. Doesn't pertain to land, the use.
Land use of the land, the size of the lot, the buffer.
Let me ask a question, separate from this rezoning application. Could a council member bring forward a proposal, this guy right here, if you wanted to, since this is his area, bring forward a proposal to give up that right-of-way from Fordland Drive and have the council vote on that separate from this rezoning application? So if we gave up that right-of-way, then when the rezoning comes through, there is no right-of-way to tie into?
It's a county right-of-way, it has a concession.
It's a county right-of-way, it's not, it's county.
That, that part is.
That particular road was built in, you know, for, under county standards and actually was maintained by state in North Carolina, so it would be their prerogative to close that right-of-way if they did. Again, I'm not sure if that would, how that would even affect our connectivity orders too, because as Deborah was saying, we, we require connectivity east, north, south, and west, so that may be something which I have to look through.
Okay.
Yeah.
Other questions from council members?
I have comments, but I'll refer to it. Jack, you want to go first, attorney?
No, no, I'm just enjoying.
Okay, I'll go. I, I went and visited Fordland Drive a couple times in the past week. If you could go back to the drawing that shows the street, that would be helpful to me. And I hope it's okay with the person who lives on the east side of that cul-de-sac, but I walked up your driveway to kind of check things out. It, it's really interesting because I think in every case we've ever gotten dealing with connectivity, I've been in favor of connectivity, and I am not in favor of connectivity in this situation. And I think this council needs to do what it, whatever it can to communicate with our other government bodies to try to help this situation, because I really do think that this would negatively impact this community and doesn't have the benefits that outweigh the negativity in this connection. I mean, I really think it would be very bad. And separate from that issue, which I think the council needs to take up regardless of what happens with this rezoning, I'm very concerned about this rezoning application. I've heard a couple times representatives say that it abides by the land use plan, and this is exactly the issue that this council has been grappling with, is that it, proposals might comply or abide with the land use plan, but that doesn't mean that it reflects the spirit of the land use plan. And that's exactly what's missing here. When the land use plan says that it's low-density, medium-density residential, we're not expecting to have a minimum requirement of 10,000 square feet. If you live on 55,855 square feet, 10,000 square feet doesn't seem like a very nice concession. It actually seems pretty offensive, having a three-foot rear setback, and maybe I misunderstood that, but it really is a little bit shocking, a three-foot rear setback. So hopefully, I'm misunderstanding what I read there, but I don't think it reflects the spirit of what our plan is. And somehow, this council needs to grapple with that issue, because we've been talking about this for a while, that we have several applicants that come in and say they, they meet the requirements of the land use plan, but they don't meet the objective of the land use plan. And I'm very concerned about that. I don't, I usually don't even say this so strongly, but I don't see myself being able to get behind this plan because I can't see what kind of revision you'd make to it that would be substantial enough to really make this transition. To me, when you look at a land use plan, I don't know if you can go back to one that shows the land use plan with the lot sizes all around it, but you should be able to squint your eye and kind of get, kind of like make a guesstimate of what that transition would have to look like to make the people in that low-density or very low-density area jive with the people over there on the, let's say, the west side of Holly Springs Road. How do you blend those two? And you don't blend those two with 7,000-square-foot lots. That seems completely incongruent in what we're trying to achieve. So I just think that somebody needs to go back and reconsider what you really want to put here. to put here, because I think it's really missing the mark. And I will say that, you know, just glancing at the lot sizes, the four closest lots on Fordland Drive are 55,855 square feet, 50,563 square feet, 40,364 square feet, and 57,377 square feet. That's very different from what's being proposed on this semi-home community, and I really think that it would decimate the quality of life for anyone who lives adjacent to this, and I don't think it's right for us to pursue it.
Okay, other questions?
No questions, just comments. First, thank you so much to everybody that came here tonight. I really appreciate y'all's passion and commitment to your neighborhood and your community, and also really appreciate that you had just a handful of speakers show up to present your case. I think all of us would like to be out of here by about midnight. We've gotten all your emails, read every one of them. We know your concern, so I do really appreciate that you all are here, but that not all of you needed to say the same thing. We wrestle with connectivity a lot, a lot. I'm almost kind of surprised this is coming to us the way it is, where we have, we don't have the ability to deal with it without it going back to a quasi-judicial and then, but then again, this is different where it's county road and stuff, and I don't, I'm a little bit confused, and I guess when I leave here over tomorrow or the next day, I'll try to figure out how that happens. I mean, we've had cases that come before us often that we do waive the connectivity. Maybe I'm confused on the zoning with the site plan, but it just, this one's different and it's unique. I don't support the connection to Fordland Drive, although I do see, as with every connectivity case, the pros and the cons of it. We heard Mr. Maynard talk about fire and emergency services response, and we heard the other gentleman, his name escapes me, the guy that's done everything.
Mr. Tucker. Melvin Tucker.
You know, both of them spoke to the advantages and disadvantages of it, and quite frankly, I agree with everything you both said. But there comes a time where we have to apply common sense to it, and I think in this case it just doesn't meet that common sense test. I think we also see a great example of why we don't take stubs and turn them into cul-de-sacs. Kind of makes people think they've got a cul-de-sac and it's never going to go anywhere. I can see why. It seems to me we have an applicant that wants to give the residents what they want in that regard. So I too would want to know how we make that happen. I don't know that I have quite the concerns you do, Ms. Robinson, regarding some of the densities and some things. I also look at, you know, the applicant appears to be working very hard to preserve some of the unique site characteristics and historic resources and such on the property. And to me, that has merit and a lot of weight to that, and I'm willing to give a little on density to, you know, preserve some of those things. The Franklin House, Gary, is held up by four trees. I mean, the roof is like caving in on one of the trees, but anyways.
There's a reason it's just like...
The story, the story behind, when I first see the picture, man, I got, I mean, I'm like, really? You know, I'm kind of looking at it, I'd like some of that wood to mill down to put in the bed of a pickup truck, but...
Don.
But when I hear the history and the story behind the house, then, yeah, okay, I, it seems to me that folks are working really hard to save this, so I really applaud that. I think working the barn into the development is phenomenal. I think that provides a killer amenity, whether it's a gathering space or, you know, banquet hall or place for folks to hold weddings or whatever. That is so cool. And then obviously the cemetery, but I could never understand why anybody would want to consider moving a cemetery. I think everybody's seen Poltergeist at this point. So anyways, that's my thoughts. I would probably support the proposal as it is without the connectivity. How we get there is what I want to know.
Okay. Comments?
Yeah, go ahead, you go.
Just comments in a couple areas. One, regarding the history, since we're talking a lot about it there. I really appreciate the preservation of the barn and the cemetery, and I appreciate Mr. Roth sticking around after the Hillcrest presentation to really talk about, talk for the house, the old Franklin House here, and his comments were excellent. I also appreciate Dr. Pritchett's commitment to Cary's history. We actually heard from a lot of Cary's living history here tonight. I mean, with Dr. Pritchett, Mr. Maynard, Mrs. Campbell, and others, I mean, there's, there's a lot of years of Cary history there, and I think that's a wonderful thing. And they're talking on different sides of the, of the issue. With the old Franklin House, because of its deteriorated condition, it's easy to spot some of the architectural features and the way this, construction features of the way this thing was built, that the experts were able to determine that it's really a unique structure for Cary, and it would be the second, it is the second-oldest structure in Cary. So yes, it's deteriorated, but part of that structure, part of that reason is the deterioration allows us to see the, the architecture. Anyway, I've been in contact with a few people last few days here, and there are some very good things going on that will very likely be able to, you know, to save that house. I sure hope. So I think that's a, you know, that's a good thing, and I appreciate everybody's commitment working, working with that. But that's the history end of it. Second comment, I concur with Mrs. Robinson's comments on the connectivity issue completely. Can't say it any better than she said it. And finally, when we say it complies with the southeast area plan, the land use plan, I noticed in the staff report, there's a couple small cases where it doesn't entirely comply. And I don't know if you're prepared to talk about it. Notes four and five, you mentioned in the staff report of the southeast area plan, there are no present conditions to address those. Maybe since we really haven't talked about that, are you prepared to just give us a few words?
In terms of density, yes. In terms of density, it's consistent with the plan, preservation of the rural character. Those are all things that are being still looked at. It's early in the process, but...
So they're being looked at, even though there are no conditions presently in the rezoning to address those?
Again, it's relatively close. It's that the language in those notes is, those are not zoning conditions, those are suggestions, so evaluating the, this as it goes to the planning and zoning board, yes, we're going to spend some more time looking at that.
Good.
And doing an analysis of the proposal.
Good, thank you. No, those are my only comments. It looks like there's a lot of work to be done yet on this, and I look forward to seeing what happens.
Ms. Bush, anything?
No, I'm going to do, or follow what all of the citizens have done and not repeat everything else that everyone else has said, and thanks to them for doing that as well. One of the things that I'd like to bring up, goes to note four and five, and I had actually made comments about, I notice more and more that development is coming to us closer to the lowest ends of the density, not lowest one acre to three acres and coming in at the one acre, but coming in at the three acre. So when we say it's a range of 10,000 to 40,000, they're skirting and sometimes not even reaching that 10,000. They're coming in with 9,000 and then coming back later and saying, hey, well, we came up 1,000. Well, you should have started at 10,000 and made your way up from there. I, I mean, that bothers me, especially if I were a homeowner along this track. I try to put myself in the place of these great people who've come to talk with us tonight and give us their opinion, and I also took a ride, I was the crazy person on the bike when it was really cold out. Sorry. Riding up Fordland, I've now told you. And it's, you know, it was built, and I think in some respects, we should do this more often, it was built for cars to go slow. This neighborhood was built so that you could enjoy the peaceful walk with your family and with your dogs. It's got those blind curves so that you do go slow. In some respects, I think when we, the gentleman was talking about why we put in traffic calming, I wish we didn't have to put in traffic calming, because the roads were, and they've done this in places like Ohio, where they make windy roads so people go slow. And that's what you, we should be doing, and I just don't think that connectivity, and I'm normally the person that likes connectivity, is appropriate for this, for this road, for this connection, and for this neighborhood. And I have a lot of reservations, I think, so, as you said, so I'll, I think there's a lot of work that needs to be done.
Second.
Three things. First, appreciation, Ms. Pritchett, for trying to choose someone to buy her land who would develop in a way that's consistent, as consistent as possible with this area. That's extremely commendable, and when you talk about the history of Cary and you talk about people who try to plan for its future, you have to appreciate that right off the bat. The second is appreciation of the citizens who really made it very clear that it's really inadvisable to have connectivity from Fordland Drive, however we choose to handle that in the long term and in the short term. But the third thing I'd say, and I've struck, Ms. Robinson, with all the research you did on getting those lot sizes to the south of this tract, is that it seems to me that all of the transition is east to west and none is south to north. And that's just unacceptable. I mean, you can't put those little lots against VLDR. I mean, that's not a transition. I don't care how big the buffer is. So I, you know, I'm willing to send it to P&amp;Z, but it needs a lot of work to come back to us looking different. That's my comment.
Ms. Sneddon? Yeah, I think most of you have said it far better than I. What I, you know, I rarely say, "I told you so." In fact, I can't remember saying that ever, but I'm really relishing tonight being able to say. Mr. Tucker, thank you, because in 1991, you were here.
Didn't you run in 87?
Well, yeah, in the 80s. Now, all I can tell you is, we were dealing, the concern I had then, and I still do, is the unintended, unintended consequences of having a blanket connectivity ordinance. My appeal back then was that it should always be reviewed on a case-by-case basis, and granted, that would mean with the pressure of the citizens coming in and the community coming in, I think the fear was that we would never want to do it. That was the fear. But we were also at the beginning of the most explosive time in our history of growth, and we were dealing with clogged roads, clogged arteries, clogged everything, and we were looking at, and the engineering solution was dispersion of traffic. It was that simple. And that's exactly how that citizen said it tonight. And so, you know, a couple of you said, "I like connectivity," and, but I think this is a good reason why not on this case. On average, I don't like connectivity, and I do respect the concern about fire, because I think that was a real frightening experience in Dutchman Downs, very frightening. And I think that whatever happens here, I hope that, you know, some thought can be given into some connection with the sewer and so forth, or the water, so that you don't ever have, as we continue to grow in this area. Now, there's an irony to the folks at Campbell, because if you recall, this, this strip was going to connect to Gorman Street, and if it wasn't going to connect to Gorman Street, the alternative was to just widen Campbell and make a kind of a bend and divert traffic up over to Tryon. So we've, we are living with the devil you know or the devil you don't, or the unintended consequences, because once the state and Raleigh saw no need for that connection to Cary Parkway, it opened up these opportunities. So I agree with you, Ms. Adcock, both sides, I think, have brought up some real, you know, there's a lot here that we can build on, and I hope that something can be worked out. But, yeah, I'm kind of like you, Don, we've made exceptions to connectivity. I don't know. I know on Coventry Glen, right after, right after, or, you know, I lose track of the years, but right afterwards, we were going to connect Coventry Glen, and we didn't. And there was a big to-do about, you know, violating the policy or, you know, whatever, but we didn't. So I know Coventry Glen is a more serene street over there, because we did not make that, that connectivity. So somehow I've got to believe that the, the great thinkers out there that want to develop this and our staff can figure out a way that we can work the system or bluntly beat the system. I don't care what word you use, but I don't, I don't want to see connectivity, you know, to the Fordham Road, and that's going to be a critical thing. Now, as an aside to all that, the only other thing that I've noticed a trend on, and that is that all of a sudden, every time these infill developments are coming in, magically appear old buildings. And, and all of a sudden, we get letters from state preservation societies, county preservation societies, and they're all very good to remind us that they're old buildings worth saving. Oh, but by the way, you Cary taxpayers should pay for it, or the developer should pay for it. So my question in a very nice way is, where were you 20 years ago? Why weren't you fundraising? Why weren't you working with the community that is dedicated to preserving our history and matching something dollar for dollar? Why is the owner, why is the onus always on the town at the 11th minute and 11th hour and 59th minute to now magically come up with the funding to preserve a building that needs a lot of much, much work to survive or be saved? It's just an observation. I think somehow we've got to partner with these groups and develop a better relationship of communication, that we look at those inventories out there and, and we get a little bit more heads up than when finally, after 20 years, a property owner gets to develop her land, gets reminded that there's some buildings that need to be taken care of, and the burden is all one-sided. We've got to strike a balance where the community steps up as a whole and says, "These, these buildings are worth preserving, and we have to go forward and find a way to help fund that." And I use that, it's no different than Hemlock Bluffs has Friends of, Friends of Hemlock Bluffs, they create fundraising activities, and they help us preserve our parks. I think the same has to, there's, there needs to be a stronger initiative on the preservation side of partnering with both the business community and the community at large in, one, educating us on the importance of these, these buildings, and two, stepping up and finding a way that they are funded, so it isn't always a crisis at the last minute. That's all. No disrespect to anyone, I'm just saying with the luxury of hindsight, they're coming up more and more. We better start working together with these organizations and these groups to find a way, you know, to partner and do something about it, so that it, so it doesn't become a cause celebre at a final vote. That's all.
Other questions, comments? As a quick review, there's a valid protest petition?
Correct.
Which means if it came back to council with a valid protest petition, it would take six affirmative votes out of seven for this to be approved. I assume the applicant, who seems to have been very dedicated so far, will continue to work with residents and with the staff and probably with the town attorney, trying to deal with some of these issues. And if anything changes between now and the time it goes to Planning and Zoning Board, there will be a public hearing at the, at the Planning and Zoning Board, which sounds like that's a high probability at this point, and I'm just guessing. And I know we usually try to stay away from dates at the Planning and Zoning Board, but since we do have a lot of people in attendance, if you have any idea when this might go to Planning and Zoning Board?
Possibility of March 17th for the Planning and Zoning Board meeting, depending on the nature of any revisions to the zoning conditions. That would give us sufficient time to advertise it for a second public hearing.
Okay, very good. Anything else? All right, we'll send this to Planning and Zoning Board, and thanks again for everyone that has shown up this evening and for the way you handled yourself. It was very informative. Before we move to our next public hearing, we've been at this for over three hours. Should we take a quick break?
Yes.
I'm getting yes everywhere. Council will take a five-minute break.
Maybe seven.
Maybe seven.
We now move to our next public hearing. I have to find my place. It's item E4, which is 13REZ20, the Harvey property. Ms. Grant of our staff will once again present the request. We're going to hear from the applicant, then we're going to open the public hearing. Counsel will not take action on this item tonight. Instead, we'll refer to the Planning and Zoning Board for their recommendation. Ms. Grant.
Thank you. This is a request to rezonate 5.4 acres located at 1720 Yates Store Road. The subject property is highlighted here in yellow, located to the east of Yates Store Road and south of Carpenter Fire Station Road. Aerial views shows that the subject property is developed with a detached residential dwelling. The land use plan designation on the property is low-density residential. It is located in the Northwest Area Plan. The existing zoning is residential 40. The applicant is proposing residential 8 conditional use. And the conditions proposed by the applicant would limit the density to 2.8 dwelling units per acre, a maximum of 15 lots, and they've offered to provide a 30-foot wide Type B semi-opaque buffer along the northern property line of the subject property. Property owners within 400 feet of the property were notified by mail of the request. The property was posted and advertised. There have been no protest petitions and no calls or inquiries about the case. The site is slightly impacted by a stream buffer, according to Cary's GIS maps, and feel determinations of this feature would be required at the time of site plan review. And the site is not impacted by any proposed greenway trails or roadside trails. A recreation payment in lieu of a land dedication would be required at the time of plat recording. This shows that Yates Store Road is on Cary's thoroughfare plan, and therefore, a 50-foot streetscape would be required along Yates Store Road. And this concludes staff's presentation. I'll call upon the applicant now, and then staff and the applicant are available for your questions following the public hearing.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. My name is Glenda Top with Glenda S. Top and Associates, and I'm here tonight representing the applicant. Staff did a very thorough job with the proposed rezoning, so I'm going to be very brief, which probably you are happy with. As Deborah pointed out, the property is located in the Northwest Area Plan. The designation is low-density. We are asking for R8 conditional use, and the zoning conditions that we're asking for make us in compliance with the land use plan. We do feel that the use is compatible with the area. The town can provide services to this area while providing sufficient services to the rest of the area surrounding the property. We do feel that the site is suitable for single-family detached residential, which is the use that is surrounding the property. We did have a neighborhood meeting. We invited property owners within 400 feet, and at that meeting, the property owner to the north had a question and wanted us to consider adding a buffer. It was pointed out earlier tonight, with the lot size that we're proposing and what's adjacent to us to the north, there would not be a required, there'd be a buffer, but it could be part of the lot. So, and it would also only be 20 feet. So what we did is we have offered a 30-foot Type B buffer. It will be common, and it will be not part of the lot, and that was in response to the property owner to the north. In closing, the request is in compliance with the land use plan. Again, we feel the use is suitable for the site and meets the goals and objectives of the comprehensive plan, and I'm here to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Thank you. Are we ready? Okay. At this time, we'll open up the public hearing. I would invite the first speaker forward. Anyone to speak at the public hearing? I see no one. We'll close the public hearing, open it up to council for questions or comments. Seeing none, this will be forwarded to the Planning and Zoning Board for their recommendation. We'll move to our next public hearing, item E5, the rezoning 13REZ31, Weston Plan Development at Center Green Park. Ms. Grant will once again present the request. We'll hear from the applicant. We'll open the public hearing, and counsel will not take action tonight. We'll refer to the Planning and Zoning Board. Ms. Grant.
Thank you. This is a minor amendment that's been proposed to a portion of the Weston PDD that impacts tracks 6 and 6A in the ONI District. Subject property is highlighted here in yellow, adjacent to Weston Parkway and along Center Green Way, which is a private road. And this arrow points to where the parcel is in relation to the overall Weston PDD. 6 and 6A are designated predominantly for office and institutional uses, and then there is a commercial overlay district. The red hash line shows a commercial overlay district that provided some opportunities for restaurant, retail, other types of commercial uses with specific restrictions. Limited commercial use was allowed in the ONI 6 tract, but it set some very, very specific limitations on if a restaurant use was proposed, it had to be within an office building. It couldn't be a freestanding restaurant. The applicant was proposing a freestanding restaurant that was just outside this district, which is why the request is before you tonight. Property right here in the center median, where a freestanding 5,000-square-foot cafe is proposed. Right now, there's an existing gazebo and community gathering spot on that property. This is basically just a realignment of the tracks. And with that realignment also comes a specific condition that would limit the freestanding restaurant to a maximum of 5,000 square feet and prohibit drive-through service. No reductions to previously approved buffers. The land area would stay the same, so it's not going to warrant traffic study and should be a relatively low impact. Property owners were notified of the request. The property was posted and advertised. There have been no protest petitions and no phone calls or inquiries. At this time, I'd like to ask the applicant to come forward, and then I'll be available
Mayor, council, my name is Dale Worenko. I'm an engineer with Witherspoon-Ravanel, and Deborah's done a great job presenting the amendment request. And it's basically, it's very straightforward, as she's indicated, and I'm representing Highwoods as the applicant. Main reason for the amendment is to just provide a more centrally-located freestanding dining facility for the site. There's really, there won't be any specific project impacts off-site with this amendment. Mainly, it'll keep the employees around at the office hours during lunch, so it's more of a house cleaning exercise to reshape the size of that track to encompass the proposed dining facility. So, thank you for your consideration, and I'm here to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we'll open up the public hearing for 13REZ31, and I would invite the first speaker forward.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. Excuse me. I'll keep this brief, so that we can all go to work tomorrow. My name is Edward Sprague. I live at 208 Seven Stone Drive in Cary. And if you look on the map, the closest residential zoning would be my house. I'm approximately 300 feet from the back of Center Green. And I don't want to characterize Highwoods as bad neighbors, but I'm not going to mince words with you. They are. They don't follow through with the existing rules as far as our ordinances. Trash is picked up at all hours of the night. Maintenance is done outside of the accepted hours. Landscaping is done outside of the accepted hours. From 19, or I'm sorry, from 2001, when we moved there, I have at least 32 incidences where they have violated the ordinances. Now, I'm not opposed to them conducting their business on their private property, but they fail to remember that the property that I own was there before they were. It may have been zoned for what they're doing there, but they also built with the understanding they were building up against a residential area. And I'm not standing here for just myself, but also for the rest of my neighbors that have properties along the back of Weston Point, up against the Greenway. It's just that if they could find their ways to stay within the rules and regulations and agree to some restrictions on this process, we could be happy neighbors together. I mean, I don't care what they do back there, quite honestly. I just don't want to hear it, and I don't want it to impact my quality of life. So, one of the things that I want to propose is some rules that you would put around this proposal and approval. Construction would be limited to business hours. They seem to have no problem power washing their metal roof on a Sunday afternoon, taking chainsaws and backhoes to their trees on Sunday afternoons. They have no problems with garbage trucks, as I mentioned earlier, dumping dumpsters at 3:45 in the morning, with their cleaning staff emptying trash cans into the dumpsters at 11:00 p.m. at night, leaf blowers starting at 6:30 in the morning. And the great thing about this is, we have called the police numerous times over the years, and whoever gets there is usually not the same person from the time before, and they'll tell us, "Well, it's an emergency." Now, I don't consider power washing a roof on a Sunday afternoon an emergency. I just can't. I can understand that some things do happen in office parks, and that they need to be addressed immediately to mitigate any further damage, but it seems like they never take into consideration where their location is, that there are residents right behind them. So, if you do go ahead and approve this, and as the previous speaker said, it's a minor issue, just keep in mind that they're not good neighbors right now. Their previous property manager, and we gave up talking to them, just was not interested in the appeals of myself, my neighbors, and my wife. They just were not looking towards any kind of resolution. They wanted to conduct their business the way they wanted to, without regard to the impact. So, if you do go ahead and approve this, just please remember that I would like to see no deliveries before 7 o'clock in the morning, no deliveries after 7:00 p.m. at night. I think the restaurant should be open only for the established business hours of the buildings themselves and the tenants themselves, that we should be able to address these, if any of these violations come up in the future. I think that we need to make sure this is all clear and written down, because when I do call the police about these quality of life issues, they're often confused about the ordinances, and they often take it into their own hands to be judge and arbiter at that moment. Of course, they're not the ones at midnight with two little kids screaming in the house because somebody is jackhammering out behind us. They're not the ones that are impacted. So I just, I do ask that, please, make sure that we're all going to follow the rules and that they can at least accommodate the homeowners that they chose to build up behind. Of course, in the perfect world, I would just ask you to have them follow the rules now. Have them put the restaurant within the buildings. I don't see the need for any further construction there, but, you know, you guys, I trust will make a good decision. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Sprague. Any other speakers for this rezoning? Seeing none, I'll close this public hearing. And I would ask Mr. Shiber, could we get our district captain to contact Mr. Sprague and coordinate their existing issues outside of this rezoning, and they need to be coordinated? Then have the captain coordinate with somebody on staff that...
Monitor.
Yeah. So we'll follow.
He shouldn't have to suffer through whatever is going on there, so we're going to get you a point of contact, and we're going to make sure that you have somebody you can call that knows what's going on. Ms. Eckhart.
Thank you, Mayor. That was well said. Ms. Grant, and can the concerns that this citizen expressed about construction during certain hours be a condition of this rezoning?
It's not pertinent to the use of the land. There is ordinance language that addresses decibel levels, and so it's really, it sounds as though...
I just thought we needed to make that clear, that even though I understand what's pushing him to ask for this, makes perfect sense.
Certainly, things that we can follow up on, and it's important to be aware of, but in terms of use of the land, building size, things of that nature.
We have to go with...
We have to go with what we can enforce, and it wouldn't be a zoning condition with noise levels.
Which speaks to what the mayor brought up.
Other questions?
Can you bring the image back up that shows the building and the little green space in between them?
I think I have a better close-up here.
Okay. Can you put the pointer on where the restaurant would go?
Right here.
Okay. And you said there's currently a gazebo there.
Mm-hmm.
Is it a 5,000-square-foot gazebo, or, I mean, how big would the restaurant building be on that footprint?
I'm going to ask the applicant if he's got a little bit more information on that.
The size of the proposed building, is that what you're asking? I believe it's around 3,800, something like that.
To me, and correct me if I'm wrong, I mean, I'm assuming the development got its name Center Green because it had this big green space in the center of it. I'm kind of, you know, one restaurant or one building, I guess, doesn't totally freak me out, but are we setting a precedent that that Center Green is going to become something else? I guess that's just a, you know, 35,000-foot observation, but...
I don't think that's the case. There's actually, as we've got the development plans in the town for review right now for the building and the development of that area, so the plan is not to develop that plaza area between it.
Okay. So, we do have a site plan in, submitted, okay, saying that's under staff review. That was going to be my next question, because if we change rezoning without a site plan, that whole area, like you said, could be one giant restaurant, so...
Can I ask a follow-up question? So, if you wanted, if, let's say, into the future, you wanted to put another restaurant, you'd have to come back and ask again to amend this PDD.
Excuse me.
Okay. So there's at least our assurance that that couldn't happen without our approval.
Well, and...
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Let me go back to that. So there's a square footage limit? Why wouldn't they have to come back?
I can help clarify this a little bit. The commercial overlay district area shown here of what's proposed is basically just elongating to incorporate that land area. It stops right now in here. If the restaurant was to be moved down to the front, you wouldn't be seeing this case. They could come in and they could put the restaurant there today. We had even suggested that they move it closer to the front and not have to go through the rezoning process.
But why would additional restaurants have to come back?
Because they need to shift the boundary line of that commercial overlay district because of where it is currently today. It didn't include the land area where the restaurant is physically proposed. It stopped short.
I understand that.
He's asking if we do shift it, if you put your picture back up, and we do shift it to include basically where they'd like to put it, and they decide they want another restaurant on the other side, do they need to come back?
They can't. Right, right. They've got...
Maximum square footage.
5,000 square feet.
That's what I was getting at.
Correct, sorry.
That's what I thought. Here we go.
The only reason I bring it up is I think you have a very special building and setup here that's very unique and provides a very wonderful amenity for your employees to, you know, take a break, relax, whatever, and I just, I'd hate to see a lot of that go away, so...
And I had a follow-up question. So, is there a plan to replace that gathering space with something else, given that you're going to replace that gazebo with, you're going to build a restaurant there?
Well, in the, in which area are you talking about?
All right, so you're talking about the restaurant's going to go where the gazebo currently is, is that right?
Yes.
So I would call that a gathering space. Is there going to be some other gathering space to replace the one that's, the restaurant is...
With the restaurant, the gathering space in the, where the restaurant is, the rest of the, the middle of the plaza area will be left as a, as a green, as a lawn, community lawn area that will, it'll serve as a community space.
So, community space, no gazebo, is that's all I'm asking, right?
Yeah, basically, yeah, the rest of the green.
Right, okay. Just wondering if you're replacing the gazebo. You're not, I hear.
Is it a public restaurant that anyone can go to, or is it only for your...
No, exclusively for the office of the Center Green Park tenants on that, on that park.
Okay.
But that is not a zoning condition, hence the staff suggesting they want to add language about limiting the size and no drive-throughs to help, help structure that.
Quite frankly, if it's a good restaurant, I wish you'd open it up to the public, but that's just me.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? This will go to our Planning and Zoning Board. Thank you. We removed item E6 from the agenda earlier tonight. We also removed item F1, so that takes us to item F2, the Third Amendment to Purchase and Develop Agreement between the town and Momento Mori. Mr. Boyd of our staff will present the requests, and counsel may take action tonight. Mr. Boyd.
Good evening, council. As the mayor just stated, items E6 and F1 regarding the Maitean Inn were removed from the agenda, but I'm bringing a separate item pertaining to the Maitean Inn, an amendment to the purchase and development agreement to extend the closing date from January 31, 2014, to June 2, 2014. The delayed decision from HUD regarding the Section 108 loan as outlined in your staff report is the reason staff recommends to amend the purchase and development agreement by extending the closing date. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
I have a couple of questions. How does this impact, this request for moving it out to June? Does this impact the plans for the Maitean Inn moving forward?
It does not impact the plans. The main reason is we've yet to hear back from the Section 108. It was a 90 days is a period of time that they give as a guide, and we had a government shutdown that happened in the midst of that 90 days, as well as weather conditions. Recently, in the past few weeks, they've been shut down additional days, so we still have yet to hear back. So it's extending the existing PDA closing date to accommodate for that decision.
And you've moved it out, let's say, six months or five months. I mean, are HUD decisions made within the five months? Will we see you back here again thinking, you know, October, or?
We...
I don't know how these things work.
Right.
You could hear tomorrow, and you'd be back in the next meeting.
Exactly.
This just gives us a range to June before we have to do this again, rather than doing it every meeting.
Right, because we've moved it once, I believe, right?
Twice, I think.
Or twice, that's why I'm asking. We've moved twice already.
Bigger window.
With a bigger window.
Bigger time window.
Yeah.
Yeah, we do think, I mean, we've already had at least more than 90 days. You know, I think on staff, Planning Manager Phil Smith has worked with these more so and could give a good indication, but thinks that that time range should be reasonable for us to at least hear, given that we are already 90 days.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions, a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the, to move the date out to, from January 31st to June 2nd.
There's a motion of the second. Discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Boyd.
Thank you, council.
We now move to our next two agenda items, number three and four are related and include the annexation rezoning request for the Herndon Burke property. Ms. Beerman of our staff will present the two requests. We're going to hear from our Planning and Zoning Board chairman and their recommendation, and counsel may take action on this item tonight. Ms. Beerman.
This is a request to annex and apply initial Town of Cary zoning to about 16 acres at the northwest corner of NC-55 Highway and Turner Creek Road. This is a vicinity map. You can see to the west, the Harmony Neighborhood. To the north is Chesney Glen, and to the south is the Turner Creek Elementary School. Site is currently in Wake County. Annexation is required to apply Town of Cary zoning, and you can see that the area is largely surrounded by area that is currently within the town limits. Process to date, the initial public hearing for this item was held on October 25th of 2012. There were subsequently two planning board public hearings, and the last time that you saw this item was at your meeting on August 8th, at which time it was tabled and then brought back to you tonight. In your staff report, there is an attachment with the chronology of the zoning conditions as they have evolved through this process. The existing zoning is Wake County. About two-thirds of the site is in the highway district, which allows a variety of residential and non-residential uses. About one-third is R40, which is county district that allows residential development at about one unit per acre. And this just, again, lists the land uses that are allowed. The proposed zoning district is residential multifamily conditional use. The proposed zoning conditions include a list of permitted uses that would allow several uses that are in the group living category, or up to 94 townhouse or duplex, I'm sorry, townhome or duplex units, or up to 68 patio homes, or several uses that are categorized in the parks and open space category. In addition, there's zoning conditions for additional setbacks and buffers along the northern property line, which is adjacent to Chesney Glen. There's requirements for additional masonry on buildings, 50% as opposed to the 30% that's required by the ordinance. Privacy fencing along a portion of the property on the western property line, and a specific provision that each unit would contain a two-car garage. There are also some proposed zoning conditions related to road improvements. laneage requirements related to the access that would be onto Turner Creek Road with just the lane configuration. Also, there is a side access onto NC-55, would not include a left turn movement, and this is a condition that was added since your August 8th meeting where you last saw this. There'd also be a provision for a left-right-in, right-out, or a right-in, right-out with the leftover onto NC-55 Highway that would provide access directly into the site. And then there's a requirement for a separate right turn lane on eastbound Turner Creek at 55 that would be required prior to recrodation of the 51st lot. That would also be subject to approval by the Town of Cary and NDOT for the design of that. This also is a condition that was added after the August 8th meeting when you last saw this, and this is, both of these items that were added were not required by the town, but were developed by the applicant in the course of meeting with the neighbors to work through some of the issues and concerns with the development. This is the land use plan. The property is designated for medium-density residential use. This designation was put in place in 2004 with adoption of the Southwest Area Plan. There is a note on the plan that calls for a 100-foot separation between the medium-density development on the site and the low-density designation that's located to the north, and this note is addressed with the buffer conditions that are proposed by the applicant that does provide additional buffering along the northern property line. This shows a recorded right-of-way reservation along the adjoining property to the west that could ultimately provide for a second connection to NC-55 for the Harmony subdivision to the west. There are a number of neighborhood concerns that have been brought up through this process. Those include safety of pedestrian access to the elementary school, general traffic safety issues related to access on NC-55, compatibility with the existing neighborhoods. Early in the process, there were also some comments related to drainage and erosion on properties to the north, and concerns with the potential for future road connection to Repor Drive. The Planning and Zoning Board recommended approval by a vote of 6 to 3. The planning board recommendation was actually in June of 2013, but the planning board chair presented the comments at the time, but can certainly present that again if you'd like to refresh your memory on the planning board's comments related to this item.
Would counsel like to hear from Mr. Swanson?
Is Mr. Swanson...
Is Mr. Swanson still here?
Yep.
I thought I saw him, there he is. I would, and I'll tell you why, because when this went to P&amp;Z, the first time, didn't it fail? Six to three? Then it went back and it passed six to three. I'd kind of like to hear what happened in the interim to, that they failed to address their concerns. Thank you, Mr. Swanson.
I'm going to stretch my memory a little bit as well, because it's, it's been about nine months since we took this one up. You're absolutely right. The first time we saw this, which was about this time last year, I think, it was a quite different proposal that had higher density, a much larger number of units. It also didn't have some of the additional conditions that the, the property owner had, had proposed subsequent to that and that's why it came back at us for a second time. And I can just go back through some of the notes, some of the observations that our members made. The reason for the six, the six positive votes were, people felt that this was a fairly good transition from the lower-density single-family to the west and to the north toward Highway 55, which was likely to be, you know, busier and support much higher densities. Some folks felt that the developer had made some fairly considerable concessions in terms of aesthetics and in terms of number of units. Thought that was a good faith effort. Felt that the developer had made a positive effort to meet some of the neighbors' concerns. On the downside, however, we had several of our members that felt it was still too dense for the location. Frankly, we had a lot of heartburn over traffic issues around the school, which you probably won't remember is, that's, we've, we've talked about that every time this has come up. We've got a, a school there that, no matter what you do, it's a problem as it is and it's not going to get any better when you put a bunch of additional homes there. We also had some anxiety about the, the whole question of 55 access. And I will tell you that the right-in, right-out provision was not one we saw. That wasn't one of the conditions at the time we last reviewed it. So, I'm not sure how our members would change their opinion on at least that, that access, 55 access issue with the right-in, right-out or the, the other conditions concerning access. We didn't see those as well, so I can't say what we would think about that. There was a, one member that felt that it was a very positive gesture of good faith for the developer to offer to do some sidewalk improvements, not on this property, but to help access to, to the school on the other side of the road. Thought that was a very good faith effort. And the observation was made that a single-family residential or, or a townhouse is probably would have had about the same traffic impacts, because a single-family tends to have a higher traffic loading in the, in the models. And that, to my, best of my recollection, is what we talked about.
Thank you, Mr. Swanson.
Thank you.
I do have one additional clarification to make with this. If I can go back to the conditions. With the revisions to the conditions proposed by the applicant that would limit the left turn lane onto NC-55, we didn't catch this until just recently. There's a, that also would need, we would also need to make a technical correction to existing condition number seven that references, the, references allowing a left turn lane. The applicant has proposed some language, some strike-through language that would just clarify that condition to marry those up so that they are consistent with each other, with maintaining that same intent. So, I just wanted to point that out to you if that's something that we need to address. And that concludes staff's comments. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
One question. During the break, I had a very, very brief conversation with a representative from the school board and my understanding was that she met with the applicant and staff and if I understood her correctly, said they were not objectionable to a turn lane or the sidewalk, that they'd be okay with that. Is that, did I understand that wrong or?
That, I didn't understand the question.
So, the applicant talked about putting a lane, a turn lane on the school property and putting a sidewalk on the school property and so she was here to tell me I thought that that would be okay.
They, with regard to the turn lane on the, the school property and, and or, the applicant has offered a condition to commit to the, the turn lane that would be on the school property. In order to accomplish that condition, there would need to be agreement with the school district in order for that condition to happen. That's not something that the town itself gets involved with. The criteria that we look at is to make sure the town and DOT are concerned, so it would be up to the applicant to get that agreement with the school board. With regard to the sidewalk, that, earlier in the process, that was proposed to us as a possible zoning condition and we determined that that would not be an appropriate condition because of the off-site nature of that improvement. So, again, that would be a private matter between the developer and the school.
And, and so I'm hearing staff is not involved, but the, the school board represent, not school board, the school representative basically said that they've, I said, are, so you're going to analyze this? No, we have analyzed this. We talked with your staff and with the applicant and we're okay with it, so.
Is she here right now?
She left.
Oh, she left, okay.
And I said I would communicate that message, but I wanted to make sure staff heard what I heard, so.
It sounds to me like there are at least two factors that were important to the residents that the applicant was willing to give to the residents, but could not include as conditions.
Right.
One of them was that turn lane, the other one was this sidewalk that would enable the kids in Harmony to walk to school safely. And the applicant is very happy to do it, but it's tough to figure out how to accommodate that when we can't put it in a condition. And it would have been nice to be able to hear from, from somebody representing the school to be able to say that it was, they were amenable to it. It'd be nice to have that somehow in a relationship so that the residents nearby could lean on that and say that there is something that they could adhere to.
Other comments?
Question about the leftover. We had previously to this meeting, we were talking with the applicant about this left turn lane leftover. Mr. Jensen made some comments about whether or not that's been decided upon, if that's a possibility. Do you mind reiterating your thoughts there?
It's my understanding from the applicant is they were, that, when they, when they begin site planning the site, they'll look at the configuration of the site plan and they'll make a, a strategic decision whether a right-in, right-out is, is best for their layout or whether they would like a right-in, right-out with a left turn in provision. But by all means, there would be a no-left turn out on the 55 from that. So, they haven't really made a decision which way they want to go, but they just, they formatted a, a condition such that it would not include one or the other, but it would prevent any left turnout.
Okay, because as I look at these zoning conditions, just reading them, it looks like the second one is right-in, right-out and the third one is a leftover. It looks like they're agreeing, agreeing to both zoning conditions.
That, the provision with the leftover, that should have, that really should include the leftover as an, as an option.
Oh, it's not an "and," it's an "or"?
It's a maybe.
Or "and."
Maybe, it's a maybe.
It's a maybe, so it's not really a zoning condition? I'm sorry.
This was a, the actual zoning condition with the wording, I apologize, I didn't paraphrase that exactly accurately. The, the actual condition is, as Jerry said, to prohibit the left turnout, but, so the options would include a right-in, right-out or a right-in, right-out and a leftover.
Okay.
But DOT said that a full access point was acceptable there, is that right?
They said that they would give it, yeah, they, yeah, I was with them. They, this is well over a year, year and a half ago, when they started looking at the site and looking at access on 55 and they said that they would, they would give consideration for a full movement, depending upon how the site plan looked and how many units. So, I think they felt comfortable at the time for giving it consideration, but they haven't, again, until it's submitted, they haven't approved anything yet.
I see. One concern I have about that condition is that you have two neighborhoods with different safety concerns. One neighborhood wants that limited access and once the applicant says, "Sure, we'll give limited access," then their concerns were appeased. Then you have the other subdivisions saying, "Man, you're going to put limited access in? Now we have real concerns because we need that second access." So, it's just a very tough situation to be in, that one condition helps one community and hinders the other or hurts the other. And, you know, it sounds like a lot of people who spoke tonight were, were really upset with that limited access.
Mary, could you put back the, the slide with the permitted uses? The county uses? That was one of the first ones, it was. Yeah.
The permitted uses or existing?
Yeah, that's just it. The, the, I'm trying to put myself in the, the shoes of the citizens that were concerned and I guess where I'm really struggling and I'm kind of looking for your feedback here at the table, but, I mean, you look at the alternatives, you know, would you be better off? I mean, to me, you're getting kind of the best alternative of transition out of the group there. I guess with the exception of a public park. But, and with all the concessions made, you know, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just struggling with, what do you want there?
Yeah, you, have it, those of you that have talked to those neighborhoods, what? You have to have something there. The person has a right to build. I don't know, I'm just, I hear the concerns and, and based on P&amp;Z, I hear kind of the overriding concerns of the school. But if the school's willing to step up and help with some of that, I mean, I know the devil's in that detail, but I'm thinking of what, you know, you said as part of the conversation. It seems like, you know, a lot of effort has been made here to address the concerns. So, you know, the question is, what else are you going to put there that's going to be able to mitigate those concerns equal to this? That's the question and in my mind. If anybody has any-
Okay, well, I'll tell you what I want to say, less density. I, I will credit the applicant for a lot of good faith work and positive effort, but I don't think it goes far enough. You know, I'm looking back at our August 8th minutes when we heard this the first time and I, I said it then and I don't feel any differently today, is that we should first do no harm. And I know this is a bad situation on Highway 55 and I know this applicant didn't create it, but what we decide tonight will decide how much worse it gets. And I want it to, I want us to do as little harm as possible. And I think six units is still too much. I think the traffic analysis shows that. I think we should, I, I don't know what else to say. I, I just don't think it goes far enough. I understand what they feel they can build, but our job is to say what we believe should go there. And I, and I think back to what Jennifer said earlier tonight about meeting the letter of the land use plan versus meeting the spirit. And I don't think this current proposal, even though it's much better, it is obviously much better, is not as good as it could be, just in my opinion.
Okay, but what you're saying is, what is it, 12 units to an acre and?
No, I'm saying it should be, they're asking for six and I think it should be three. They can do three to eight. Three is in there.
Three's low density.
Well, it's in there.
They can do 3.1.
3.1. But my point is just, it doesn't go far enough.
This is the, the, I think one of the speakers, I think it's Prasad, said it well. He said, "The issues are safety, density and parity." The safety issues could be addressed if there was a way for a private agreement between the school system and the applicant or the neighborhood and the applicant to be able to get into writing this thing about the sidewalk and that turn lane. But one of the other speakers said, "The problem with this is that nothing is in writing and they're being asked to throw their support behind something that doesn't have, have this in writing and that's a concern of theirs." And I really respect that concern. The second concern they had was the density. And that, you know, Gail spoke to that already, but I would say that, you know, he was saying the six units per acre is double the adjacent community and it's 80% of what's allowable in the land use plan. I think that's reasonable. I mean, going down somewhat in the density, I think, would probably gain a lot of support from people around this. And then the last, you know, was parity and, you know, at, at some point, we have to make the decision whether townhomes is the appropriate, are, are townhomes the appropriate transition between single-family and a highway? I think if done well, I'd say yes, but it really is predicated on those first two.
Right, and I think that, to me, the parity was answered with the two, the garage, you know, the condition of the garage, which kind of gives it, you know, the look and the feel, which is kind of the perfect transition. But, you know, what I'm hearing is, is that six, because of the vulnerability of that area, six is still considered-
I just think about, I mean, and-
Well, that's what I was looking for.
Density speaks to the safety.
Because I'm kind of up in the air and just trying to get the handle on that.
Well, I think there's one other thing to consider when you add the one, two and threes. I think a lot of the homeowners, you could sense the frustration. I know that the developer's working hard and they've come to us at, you know, now with this final plan that meets a lot of the needs. They've got, made some headway with the school district, you know, they've talked about adding another lane. But we heard from many of the homeowners that they haven't been able to get in touch with the developer. And we specifically said in August, "Reach out to the homeowners." You know, make a good faith effort. And, you know, even members of council have met with the homeowners and with the developer and I do think that that individual said, you know, is it, is it, is it a strategic decision that the day before, the week of the council, to come with your last-minute plans and we have nothing in writing? I think that there is something to be said that, you know, developers, you know, have to put their best foot forward. We've heard of some great ones and, and obviously, this developer obviously has done great work in, in Cary as well. But there is something about working in good faith, because they have had since August and they shouldn't hear something, some of these items, to ask the homeowners to get behind when they have nothing in writing and only heard about them this week.
And I appreciate the applicant's steps that they've taken since the first time we saw this. I think every change we've seen has been for the better. But I'm just not there yet either. There's, it's a mess right now, that intersection. The applicant didn't create the mess that's there and it's not the applicant's responsibility to wave a magic wand and fix it. I don't think they can fix it 100% themselves. I understand all that and I respect that. But the issue exists and when you add the fact that part of the problem is in elementary school there, I mean, it, it turns from a traffic situation to a safety issue and I think that's where people are coming from, that's where I'm coming from. I see it, I, I live right near there. I see it several times a day. And I just remember when Mr. Smith was coming over to my house, we were carpooling to the retreat and you didn't come in that way, but you, you came through school traffic on Davis Drive Elementary School, which is a different situation. And you were saying, "What's all that traffic going on? What's going, this is, this is terrible." And I said, "Well, that's, you came at school time." And that, believe it or not, is nowhere near as bad as it is at Turner Creek. I live in between the two. So, there's a situation there and it's, it's a serious one. I don't think the applicant can wave a wand and fix it. I don't know whose responsibility it is. I think it's our responsibility to help, but I definitely know it's our responsibility not to make it any worse. And that's Mrs. Adcock's point of doing no harm. And somehow 94 townhomes, I, I just don't see that helping in, in any way. And then, I mean, that's my personal feeling. But I add to that the fact that we've heard from so many residents, emails, public hearings, on and on over the last year and a half or so, and not one of them has spoken in favor of this. And we had a contentious- has spoken in favor of this. And we had a contentious rezoning earlier this evening, the Pritchett rezoning, and we had several neighbors speaking in favor of it. I haven't heard one speak in favor of this, and they are the people I represent. So when I add my personal feelings, and then look at the feelings of everybody around, I just can't support that tonight.
Mr. France?
You're right, or I think all of you are right, that, you know, anything that goes on this piece of property is going to add to the traffic problem. That, you know, Mr. Yurha, you said they didn't create, nor can they wave a magic wand and fix it, but they're darn sure trying. They're committed to off-site traffic improvements, turning lane, off-site sidewalk installation. Now, I totally understand and respect the concern that that's not in writing. And maybe if they were in writing, that might ease some council members' concerns on those issues. Might ease some of the citizens' concerns. So, given that this has gone on for a year and a half plus, I wonder, well, if we had those couple conditions in writing and approved from the school system, would that change folks' minds? Would it change the neighbors' minds or the residents' minds? Would it change the council's minds? I've heard some folks talk about, you know, density is an issue, and some seem to think more that not having that confirmation from the school system is the issue or one of the big issues. So I would almost like...I would like us to consider tabling this again, to see if we can at least get those documents in writing so we have that confirmed, and then that way we're making a decision on all the genuine information that we can get. That said, the property is currently zoned highway commercial most or large part of it. I mean, that could be commercial, retail, restaurants, McDonald's, whatever, you know. So I look at townhomes as not being as negative an impact to traffic as some of those uses. You know, we all know that townhomes are, for residential, are low-traffic generators. They're seniors who have downsized. They are young families with little to no children, single folks. They don't have the children that our single-family neighborhoods have. So they are...you might have a density of six units per acre, but you've got the kids or the impact on our school system and such that, you know, single-family homes might generate. So that's not as frightening to me, I guess, as some of the things that could be built there today. It does comply with our land use plan, although I hear the concerns that a lot of things coming in at the upper level. But we set a land use plan. I mean, that's our guide and our rulebook and what we want to see. And if we say it's three to eight, and they come in, we can't keep punishing or we...I'm not going to say keep. We can't penalize somebody for coming in under the guidelines that we set. It's a downzoning to me. It could be commercial, it's going into residential. It does provide a much-needed access point for the Harmony subdivision. Who here would vote for Harmony right now with one access point?
I voted against it in P and Z. So Harmony voted now.
Say, "I told you so."
I told you so.
I mean, it's a big problem, you know. This will help in that regard. It really will. They're giving the 100-foot buffer to the north side, privacy fencing and such on the west side. They have made efforts to reduce the density. I guess roughly 30% is my math, and that's bad. The two-car garages, to me, is huge. That ensures a more higher-quality product, higher price point. You know, the turning lanes, sidewalks I've already mentioned. To me, to go from a P and Z denial to a P and Z approval, I think has some merit. I think it speaks to a lot of the changes that have been done and efforts that the developers made. That's my concern. I'm not thrilled with it, but I would vote for it. So, but if there is a sense here that we'd like to have official approval from the school system, then I would be willing to table it if that was okay with the applicant. And then the other thing I do worry about, the residents have been going on with this for, what, a year and a half plus? I mean, do they want to keep coming back, you know? I mean, eventually this has got to end sometime, but I would like to at least get that information from the school system.
Ms. Adcock, first.
First of all, I want to thank Mr. France for trying to find a middle ground. I really appreciate that. But I want to be totally honest and say that it's not the school system's lack of putting something on paper that would make a difference to me. That does not change the safety of people getting on and off 55. And that's what I'm worried about. And so I wouldn't want to say, "Sure, table it," and then come back and vote against it anyway. That's not my sticky point. My sticky point is, yes, they meet the letter of the land use plan. They're between three and eight, but they could be lower than six, and that would have less impact on people getting on and off 55. That's where I am. And so I appreciate your trying to offer that. It would not change my mind.
Ms. Robinson?
Okay, well, we've heard the concerns that have been addressed here. I mean, we've heard density, which I think a lot of people here at the table would say, "This just feels too dense still." And we've heard the safety, you know, that the fact that the applicant has agreed with residents to put in some of these measures that would help safety around the school, but they haven't been able to achieve it in any way with Wake County. Maybe there's some kind of agreement. We've also heard that the residents really haven't had the right amount of time to talk with you guys, the applicant. And I think that's really illustrated the fact by the write-in, write-out, that appeases one community but really is alarming to another community. So my question for you is, if we were to table this, could you address density, giving...also open up this dialogue and have a more robust conversation between all the communities? And could you make some headway in some of these safety issues that would really address a lot of concerns that the parents have?
I'll start with the safety issue. And Betty Parker was here, and she wanted to speak. She showed up late. I believe she requested to be heard tonight. So, just for what it's worth, she wasn't able to be here when public speaks out occurred, because she was at another meeting in downtown Riley. She showed up, she waited a while, and she made a request to be heard. If she were here, I think what you would hear from her would give you comfort about Wake County Public Schools' reception of this particular proposal as it relates to the sidewalk, as it relates to the turn lane. With respect to the sidewalk, we were previously asked to provide a letter from D.R. Horton, addressed to the Harmony Homeowners Association, saying that they would essentially put in the sidewalk, that they've worked with Wake County Public School System, they've engineered the site to a certain degree, but until Wake County Public Schools approves it, which is at a much later date, there's nothing to give them just yet. But they gave them a letter that basically said, "We will follow these steps." We didn't receive the request to reduce that to a quote-unquote "legal agreement" until two days ago. We provided that letter back in August. If they would like to see that in a legal agreement, I'm happy to do it. I don't think it's necessary. Not sure if it's totally enforceable under North Carolina law, but if that's what folks want to see, if they feel like they need that from D.R. Horton, they're happy to do that. Density, I don't think we're ever going to get 3.1 dwelling units per acre. We can certainly sharpen our pencils anew and try to find something that is less than six, probably more than 3.1, and see if there is a way to find a middle ground. Again, I can't make any promises, and it sounds like if we come back at 5.9 dwelling units to the acre, we're going to have some people who still aren't supportive of the case, and I understand and respect that. So on those three points, I don't think we're that far off from where you folks are talking with, except for density. I think that's the biggest gulf that I see is between six and three right now. The other issues are issues we can solve and solve pretty easily.
Okay.
Okay, so we have choices here, unless you've got...
Well, I just, I guess I have a question for the council. Gail, you know, we jokingly said 3.1.
I want to see it as low as the land use plan would support. I'm just telling you what I want. Doesn't have to be what you want.
I just wanted to hear what everybody had to say about density. I'd just like to hear what other people's thoughts are, yours and other people's thoughts.
I have to say, I didn't bring up density because I was trying to keep into the scope of things of what I had already heard, but I also would like to see a lower density. I think it speaks to...the density number speaks to the safety number and the traffic on 55. I mean, they're tied closely together, and they both correlate exactly. So I'd like to see that, you know, number closer to 3.14, you know, as close as it can be. I think that's what the homeowners want. I mean, I don't want to speak for the homeowners, but when they were sitting around and talking with us, that's what they were saying, you know, a number closer to the lower end of the three to eight would make them feel more comfortable. I did hear, and I think, Ms. Robinson, you brought up, that the traffic numbers might not be as markedly different if it were three or four compared to six, but I think it does give a certain level of appeasement to the homeowners, that it's not this big difference between their...the number of homes they have per acre to the townhomes. And I absolutely appreciate all the hard work the applicant's done. It's a very difficult road that they're walking, road, 55, but...and they're stuck between a rock and a school, so I'm just going to keep going with the cliches. But they've got...
They're not in harmony with the...
Darn. But, you know, some of the ideas that they've come up with for adding a right turn lane, a dedicated right turn lane, I mean, some of those are very creative and would make it feel to the residents that traffic is moving a little bit because school buses can't make a right on red. So I think they're coming up with some creative ideas, which I absolutely appreciate, and I think the homeowners appreciate that, too. I just don't think we're close to the finish line.
You know, I'm not a clairvoyant, but, you know, I'm kind of at the point where I think once we have something really substantial in that, in the density, I think we should vote on it. And if it really is that close, and to solve the problems of getting back to the neighbors and that, you can always come back with a revised plan. We can always approve that, not waiting a year.
Let me review our choices before we continue, just so we're clear. This is annexation rezoning, so we can't address the rezoning without the annexation.
Correct.
And so that's why the density question's so important. If the density is not...if the density's going to keep you from voting yes, then there's no need to table, and that's where Jennifer was going with that.
Right.
And I think there's four. We probably ought to get a show of hands. And then if there is four, then we can go to the applicant and say, "What would you like to do with your annexation petition? Would you like to pull it or what?" I think that's where we are, unless you've got something.
Yeah, my proposal would be, because we've heard the applicant say they don't feel like they're that far off on at least two of the categories, and there's a third one. He's heard pretty resounding comment from this council about the densities. My proposal is we go ahead and table this, give the applicant one more shot. I mean, they've been working at it, but they've now heard clearly from us, again, that we really want you guys to communicate with both neighborhoods and have an open dialogue and have a robust conversation and address some of these things. And here's the deal: if you guys don't feel like you can come down to a density that is reasonable, maybe you just withdraw it, and then, you know, we don't ever take a vote on it. That's my thought, is table it, give you guys a chance. If you don't think you can ever get it back or don't want to come in front of us because you don't think you can make it something that's imminable, then withdraw it at that point.
We could get both questions answered with a motion to table, and if the motion fails, then we'll know that most people think tabling it's not going to do any good, and density will probably be the issue.
Make a motion to table it.
Before we vote on that, may I interject? And I'm wondering about the timing. Is council acting within the appropriate time of the P and Z board's recommendation, or does this have to be referred back to P and Z board?
If it's tabled.
Rather than tabling it.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
I'm wondering if it'll extend it beyond the time within which you have to...
Who would know the answer to that question?
It's been more than 90 days since it's been to P and Z. I mean, I think the P and Z meeting was in June?
June.
The second one.
The answer to your question is probably yes.
Well, although it was brought forward to you at one point, and then you continued from August, so I don't know. I would have to look.
When it came back to us tonight, it had been previously what? Tabled, continued, what?
Tabled by council, I think.
It was tabled by council in August.
Okay.
And prior to that, there was a recommendation...the recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Board was made in...
June, okay.
June, I believe.
They took two votes. When was their second vote?
Was that their second vote in June?
That was their second vote. Their first vote was in April.
Okay.
Then it came back to this board. It went back to P and Z in June with some changes, and that was the point at which it was recommended for approval.
It came to us in August.
Then it came to you in August.
Ween is looking. It looks as if the LDO requires council to act within 90 days of P and Z's recommendation or the final public hearing, if there's no recommendation or it's deemed denied.
So we've already blown that.
So our option would be to send it back to P and Z or act on the annexation tonight if the applicant wants us to.
I'm not understanding why that was a concern now and it wasn't a concern from August of last year to now.
Well, in August, we still had time, but it didn't come back in time. June, July.
Mr. Barker, are you going to rescue us?
September.
I mean, I didn't know what your thoughts was, but the P and Z board presentation was made within that timeframe, and the action that council took was to table it. I don't know if it had to be either approved or not, or it was acted upon, but I just don't know if it's clear in the ordinance or action that is.
So we did act on it within the 90 days. We just haven't finished acting on it.
Well, it's up to Chris, but the wording's not very clear.
Tabling is in action. Is tabling in action?
Well, it appears, just as my reading it now, it appears to require either approval, rejection, or referral back to P and Z board.
Okay.
So before we possibly entertain a motion, there's so many possibilities here, I would like to know if the applicant would be interested in it going back to the Planning and Zoning Board, which adds a lot more time before we entertain a motion to that effect.
We'd be fine to go back to Planning and Zoning. Mr. Mayor?
Okay, so that's a possibility, and it's...
Or perhaps we could just continue this to our next council meeting and work on it in the interim, see if there might be other options rather than referring...
There's a difference between continuing and tabling it, though. That seems like semantics.
Yeah, it's not, yeah.
Let's send this back to P and Z. I'd like to have them take a stab at this after you guys do your magic. So go do the things that you're going to do to make this seem so appealing. Send it back to P and Z. Let's see what they think of it, and then bring it back.
I want to hear from the town attorney.
My concern would be if it's been...if under our ordinance it's been deemed denied, that may be a pointless gesture to refer it back.
Why would it be deemed denied?
Why is it the...
The way that our ordinance reads, that council has to act within 90 days of P and Z's recommendation in one of three ways, either approving, denying, or referring to P and Z. And having failed to, if we did, and that's what we'd like to explore, if there might be some other fact we don't know about.
But you said there's three things, and one of them is referring it back to P and Z.
But that's all...those are the actions council has to take within those 90 days.
And we didn't...
And...
We didn't do it.
Is that what you're saying? We missed the 90-day window?
Yes.
We didn't do any of those three things.
Yes.
So what does that mean to the...
Failure of town council to act within 90 days of the delivery of the P and Z's recommendation shall be deemed denial of the rezoning.
Well, it's just...
But it's not a rezoning.
That wasn't our intent, and it doesn't seem like they should pay the consequences for our mistake.
So there seems to be a lot of confusion here. So at this point, I think it might be in our best interest to continue it, if that's the advice of the town attorney, and we can straighten this out.
Well, that feels more fair.
Yeah.
Because I feel like it's otherwise unfair to the applicant that we let the time lapse when it was not our intention to do that. And it wasn't my intention, anyway.
So we would need a motion to continue or just continue it?
Just continue it to the next meeting, and that gives us the opportunity to explore this and see if there might be some fact we don't know.
I want to explore a lot of past decisions, too.
And in the interim, the applicant is free to work on all the issues that we brought up, and...okay. Is that okay with the applicant?
That sounds fantastic.
Okay.
So do we need a motion to continue?
She said no.
Just out of abundance of caution, let's have a motion.
I'll make a motion that we continue this case to the next...
Council meeting.
Council meeting.
Second.
Does the motion second discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries. Thanks. Moving right along.
Point of order.
Yes.
Sue, did Jennifer make a motion earlier? Did Don make a motion earlier to table, and it got seconded, and we didn't take any action on that motion?
No. No, it did not get a second.
She seconded it.
Oh, I didn't hear that.
I didn't hear it seconded.
Okay. So can we just pretend it didn't happen, or do we need to do something?
Didn't happen, I didn't say anything.
She, she was mistaken.
I was sitting next to her, she didn't say anything.
I was hearing Aiden.
Didn't want to get a call later that we had to come back in.
Okay, um, we're now next to agenda items. Items six and seven are related and include the annexation rezoning request for the Howell tract. Ms. Granton will once again present these two items. We're gonna hear from the planning board, um, their recommendation, and we can take action on this item tonight. Ms. Granton?
Correct. This is a request for, as you mentioned, annexation and rezoning for approximately 14.76 acres located, uh, along Davis Drive and Farm Pond Road. This slide shows the subject property highlighted in red. The applicant is asked that you give some indication of how you're intending to vote with the rezoning so that they'll know whether or not to continue to move forward with their annexation petition. Vicinity map shows the subject property located north of Farm Pond Road and to the west of Davis Drive. The property is developed with detached residential homes and is, um, accompanied by vacant property as well. Land use plan designation is low-density residential. The existing zoning is Wake County R-40, and the applicant has proposed residential eight conditional use. Conditions proposed by the applicant would limit use to detached residential, a maximum of two dwelling units per acre, a maximum of 28 lots. The applicant has proposed a minimum 20-foot-wide perimeter buffer in common open space along western and northern property lines, and offered a condition that states that lots within 50 feet of Farm Pond Road shall be a minimum of 20,000 square feet in size. This is an applicant's exhibit that just shows you where the, the 50-foot area is. It doesn't mean that that's the only place where you'd see that size lot, but any lot that has, is within that 50 feet would be a minimum of 20,000 square feet. The remaining lots would be able to be as low as 8,000 square feet. There's been community feedback, you heard some tonight, there was with the initial public hearing and before the planning and zoning board, neighborhood concerns about traffic and access onto Davis Drive, lot size. Once again, street connectivity is a, a concern. The neighbors on Farm Pond Road asked for a zoning condition that would prohibit connectivity to Farm Pond Road, and, um, that was not something that could be asked for as part of the rezoning. Transition between zoning districts and preservation of the rural character of Farm Pond Road. There's also been support voiced by some of the residents of the Stonecrest subdivision to the north of the property, uh, and that there was also some concern about site plan-related issues such as storm water management. The planning and zoning board recommended the request for approval with a vote of seven to one, and I'll call on Mr. Swanstrom to share with you their comments.
As discussed, um, we voted seven to one to recommend approval, um, largely be because we thought the developer had made a reasonable compromise in designating the 20,000-square-foot lots, um, next to the subdivision on Farm Pond Road. Our one descending vote had concerns about traffic from, uh, Farm Pond Road onto Davis Drive, and, um, and felt that, uh, the, uh, proposed lot sizes were still too, too dramatic a transition, um, from the very large lots in the Farm Pond Road subdivision. The rest of our members didn't agree.
Okay, questions for Mrs. Swanstrom?
Oh, I don't have a question for Mr. Swanstrom, I'm sorry.
For anyone?
Discussion.
Okay, please.
First of all, this is one of those occasions where I feel like the, the applicant and the neighbors, neither one of them are leaving completely happy, but satisfied. And I've spent a lot of time talking to the, um, neighbors, particularly to the south of Farm Pond Road neighbors, the ones who have the most to lose, if you wanna look at it that way, and also the folks from El Star, and I have to say, I think they've worked real hard on this, they've gone from 43 lots to 28, which is a little more than a 30% reduction. They've offered that 20-foot buffer between the Farm Pond Road residences and the new development. They've got 20,000 square feet lots adjacent to them, and they have in good faith, um, stated that they plan to act, to ask for that connectivity to Farm Pond Road to be eliminated when they come back for quasi-judicial. And for all those reasons, I'm gonna support this, and I feel like it's just head and shoulders better than the first plan that we saw months ago.
Okay, other comments?
I'll just say real fast, um, I'm really pleased to see the size of the lots, especially those 20,000-square-foot lots alongside of the neighbors on Farm Pond. Um, I'll be voting in favor of this, but when it comes back and they request that waiver for the connectivity to Farm Pond, I'm not in favor of that. I think that, I think that their, the thought is, is now they're gonna have more people coming out onto Farm Pond, but in reality, you do that connection, that gives Farm Pond people a way out that's safer than what they have now, and gives them some alternatives. So, um, I think we oughta be looking at that connection, and I know that's probably very unpopular among the people who live on Farm Pond, but I think that's the right thing to do, but I will vote in favor of this rezoning.
Okay, other questions?
I would just state that I would support no connectivity to Farm Pond, uh, for many of the reasons Jack spoke about earlier.
Okay. Don't hear any objection to the rezoning if we get to that point, and that's what we need to figure out before we go ahead with the annexation. Is there objection to the rezoning?
No, I was gonna make a motion unless people-
Otherwise, I would take a motion.
I move approval of rezoning, uh-
Annexation.
Annex.
Gotta do annexation first.
Thank you very much. I move approval of annexation, uh, 13A20.
A second.
There's a motion and a second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay. Motion carries unanimously.
I just want-
Ms. Eckhart.
Which one is it, Kim?
You, she can't make up her mind.
Where's the food? I just need something to eat, okay? So now I move approval of rezoning 13REZ14.
A second.
Motion and second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
On to my hands.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Now I'll move approval of the comprehensive plan consistency statement.
Second.
There's a motion and a second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Eckhart.
You're welcome.
That takes us to our next agenda item. It's a council-initiated request regarding the, regarding expediting North Carolina 540 Morrisville Parkway interchange ramps. Councilmember Robbins, and I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you very much. I had the pleasure to meet with representatives of Twyla Road, people who live on Twyla Road, a land planner on their behalf, and several of our staff members to talk about the future interchange of 540 at Morrisville Parkway. And as many of you recall, 540, um, when it was, originally had its, um, design done, it did not have an interchange at Morrisville Parkway, and that was like a late entry. And because of that, we have been looking for a way to find money to be able to do this. Um, and Lori, I'll let you go ahead and give all the details on what staff has been doing, and then we can talk about it a little bit more.
Okay, just quickly, um, we are working on the design for both the Morrisville Parkway extension as well as the Morrisville Parkway interchange, and expect to have that design complete by this fall, um, working with NC DOT and getting all those approved.
Okay. And the residents along Twyla Road had a rezoning that went through that changed their land to a mixed-use category. The value of their land and their ability to sell it is predicated on having that interchange in place, and so, right now, the bond would be floated in 2018 that would provide the money for the interchange, which means probably the interchange wouldn't be built until 2022. Not only would it have, um, uh, impact to the people who own the Twyla Road property, but there are lots of residents in Western Carey that would benefit tremendously for having, um, not only Morrisville Parkway punched all the way through, but to have the interchange in place, and this is something that we hear from citizens about frequently. So the Twyla Road representatives approached us with the suggestion that we could enter into a public-private partnership, which is sometimes referred to as a 3P, um, to advance funds for the ramps. And so tonight, I'm just asking, uh, council if you all would support directing our staff to go into conversation with the developer, potential developer for the Twyla Road project, and NC DOT and the Turnpike Authority to look at ways that we might be able to advance the funding, um, something creative like we did on 55 or something like that many years ago.
Okay, Ms. Eckhart, you were co-sponsor?
I, I was, and I, the way Jennifer explained it to me, we would not be, um, spending money we don't have. What we're looking for are creative ways to fund this and get it moved along faster than we think might otherwise happen if we don't have some kind of intercession.
Okay, um, and my question, what you were mentioning 55, I think we put town hall up as collateral on that.
Yeah, that was just a creative, yeah.
Bad example, Jennifer.
Yes, I'm sorry.
But the way I understand-
You did advance the road funding on that one.
Understand the possibility is using, um, funds as in a loan, sort of, to get this moving forward.
Well, I think, I think this is something that staff and the turnpike would be working out. I will mention on 55, I think we made about $200,000 on that deal when we loaned the money to, to the, um, NC DOT to advance that, so it's not that bad of a, for example. It just makes me nervous to hear more of this.
My only concern out of, out of all of this is to make sure we're not leapfrogging other prioritized projects that would be impacted by moving funding from that, and I don't know, and I guess that would come back.
I think that would be coming back to us.
Yes, we will look at all those options. It is important to note, though, that we believe that the developer needs to come to us with a proposal for us to approach NC DOT and the Turnpike Authority with something concrete to discuss with them.
But I appreciate that, Mayor, because what we don't wanna do is have a process where we prioritize our capital spending, particularly roads, and then suddenly just go, oh, well, now we'll just take this one out of the list and put it up top, and, you know, willy-nilly like that. I agree with you, that shouldn't happen that way.
Okay.
Is this a significant amount of staff hours, too? I mean, I, staff is pretty full up.
We believe we can accommodate it. We meet with the DOT regularly, so we would have to reach out to some different people in the Turnpike Authority, but we'd be happy to do that.
Okay.
Okay, other questions, comments?
Well, I accommodate, I, I'm just a little concerned this is being driven by specific landowners to advance their project, and I, I do hear the value that this could benefit a lot of West Carey and folks, but, I don't know, I just don't have a warm and fuzzy about it.
I think that, um, it is definitely being driven by landowners who need this for their project. There's no question about that, but it wouldn't be, it was not even something I would even consider if it didn't have tremendous value to people who live in Western Carey. And the impact on congestion could be great by having this interchange in place because of the circuitous route that people need to go on right now to be able to get onto 540 from Western Carey. I think this would just be really beneficial to the community that's there. I think they'd feel less isolated if we had five, uh, Morrisville Parkway punched through and the interchange in place. I think this would really be good for Western Carey, and that's why I'm interested in entertaining it and seeing what our staff and a developer and the Turnpike Authority can come up with.
Would you like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we direct staff to discuss a 3P with the developers of the Twyla Road project and the Turnpike Authority. Second.
There's a motion and a second, further discussion. All in favor?
Just curious if Ms. Robinson's gonna get on 540 after this, but-
No, I will not.
Okay.
I will not pay for it, sorry. Too cheap.
All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion carries six to one.
Thank you.
That takes us to the two items that were pulled from the consent agenda. The first item is the Carpenter Neighborhood Park. We removed this item, as I said, from the consent agenda, and, um, oh, it says, Mr. Shiver will make some comments in the beginning about this. Mr. Shiver?
Thank you, Mayor. Before staff, uh, before I and staff answer questions about this issue, I wanted to just, um, bring council up to date on exactly why this issue is before you this evening, and there are two basic reasons. Uh, first of all, we're facing a, a current higher-cost estimate for the park elements, in particular, the proposed pond feature. The other reason that it's before you tonight is that, um, there's a requirement for a grant funds that we used in the purchase of the property, the park property, that this, uh, project be under construction by June 2014 in order to preserve the, I believe it's in the area of $217,000, uh, grant funding that was used for the, uh, project. So, um, we bring it tonight because there is no time to wait. In order to get, uh, the final elements done, um, our review process through the development, review process through the development process, we need, uh, to have a decision this evening, uh, on the park, on the various elements that might be included. Uh, now, a little bit of history or a little bit of discussion about how that estimate came about. Uh, the 2 million project budget was developed in the summer of 2012 for the bond referendum that was held, uh, in the fall of 2012, and this was prior to the completion of the master planning process. So the, the 2 million figure that was used was based on a relatively recent, uh, park project we had and was actual construction costs, uh, for the Walnut Street Park, and that was more of a, um, what you might call a standard or typical neighborhood park that we do. Uh, and I think it's important to note, too, that it did not have a feature like a pond in it, which is a bit unusual. We usually do not build ponds in our neighborhood parks. In January, uh, about this time last year, January of 2013, council approved the Carpenter Park Master Plan, which was after the bond referendum. And the master plan, if you read through that, my understanding, or my, my interpretation as I read through, is the master plan seems to support the $2 million pond feature. Now, at that time, and I wanna be fair about this, uh, you know, there was not a real detailed look at the cost of what that pond might cost. But in the master plan, it shows, um, it talks about, in all three concept plans in the master plan, it talks about the pond feature. In fact, the master plan document talks about that pond as a special, significant feature that should be included. The phase one cost was estimated at 2 million. There was another phase, um, to be done, if you recall, um, or if you take a look at that report, you will note that phase one costs are listed, and then there are future, uh, items to be added, or elements to be added to the park at a later time. The pond appeared to be included in phase one, uh, but most of the discussion was about earth-moving dollars associated with that, which is what we have found that would cost much more to do. Uh, so, for example, the underpass, I think that we talked about at that time, connecting the two parks across Marshville Park, um, Marshville Carpenter Road, uh, would come at a later point, uh, and of course, the cost for that would be, um, would be much higher. Uh, so, as we, that estimate was 2 million for phase one, however, when we were refining the elements of the project last fall, it resulted in a higher-cost estimate, and is primarily due to extensive earth-moving required to construct the pond, and that earth-moving and the cost associated with it was not originally planned. Uh, the, I also want to point out and note to council, we will not ask you tonight to appropriate money, whatever your decision is, if more is needed. We, our preference is to wait until the project is actually bid, uh, and that typically, uh, pretty much sets what our budget will be, because then we have known costs from the project, and what it, what it will cost from true competition. The master plan establishes a long-range vision for the park, and not all the elements, as I noted, have to be built at one time. It can be, and we frequently have built parks in phases. The overall master plan for our, all park elements is currently estimated at 4.3 million. That includes that broad category of all elements, including the underpass, for example, and is, and is anticipated to be constructed in phases. Uh, the staff report, uh, that was attached to your agenda, uh, has prepared, it will show three options that have been prepared by staff for council to consider, given that the pond feature of phase one and its estimated cost is higher than originally anticipated. is higher than originally anticipated. Option A develops a project scope that matches the $2 million that was contained in the bond referendum. And there are two other options if council chooses to do more at this time, that are reflected in options B and C. I would note, however, that even though staff is recommending the $2 million project is outlined in option A, if you do build a pond in the future, it is likely to be considerably more costly than our estimate is now. And part of the reason for that is it is likely we would have to go back and re-deserve some other features of the park, depending on what we put in now and construct it now. Those, some of those would have to be taken out in order to put the pond in. So the cost would be higher, and I just want council to be aware of that. So briefly, staff report summarizes all of these well, but if council, if option A is chosen to include a playground, paved loop trail, lawn areas, basketball court, community garden, parking, restrooms, and preserved natural areas. This could leave room for a future pond, picnic shelters, and other items to complete the Master Plan. And these could be phased and completed over the years as funding becomes available. So if council has any questions, I'll be happy to answer them, or the detail, any detail I can, Paul Kuhn of the staff would be happy to also try to answer your questions.
Okay, very good. Counsel?
Well, I'll just bring up what I think maybe some of my other council members are thinking. All of the pictures that we showed our citizens, Mr. Kuhn, when we showed them, for instance, the pictures at the time of the bond referendum, the concept plan, did it include the pond at that time in all those pictures?
We, we had that question today, and we were going back to look. And because the bond advertisement came out in June, and the Master Plan didn't finalize until January, I was not able to find out exactly which image we had shown between that time. So we'd have to get back and check on that.
I was unable to go back to carrybonds.org. I went to the Wayback Machine, but, and found the original website, but I wasn't able to look at the pictures. But I have a printout, and it shows the, but I don't know if that's a printout I just got in a small group meeting, or-
The written material for the bond referendum did not reference a pond.
No, but it had a picture of Carpenter Park.
It may have had a picture. I did not see any pictures associated with that.
I believe in that. So, so my concern is, and I think you brought up a great point, that, that one, I think in a lot of perception of our citizens' minds, the key feature of this farm-like pond, or farm-like park, was its beautiful pond and the trail that goes around the pond. And so to have the park without the pond, and also the, the great point that you brought up, that it's going to be even more expensive to put the pond in afterwards, I would be in favor of finding a way to have the pond in the first phase, but also, maybe this is something that's not possible, still hitting the close to $2 million mark. Is there an option, the, we were given three options. The option with the pond, the first option with the pond is 40% more than the $2 million. Is there an op, is there an option where you can have the pond, take out something else that still keeps us to our original budget?
It was not included in the staff report, but staff did look at an option without or with a pond, but trying to keep it to the $2 million budget. And we can definitely go back and look at that option again, if council desires that. But it required removal majority of the other elements in the playground, the restroom, some of the other higher-dollar cost. But if that's a consideration, we could go back and look at that.
So let me see if I understand. So if you, we choose option A, which is the close to $2 million marker, it has the, it has much of the trail, 80% of the trail, but it's going around an area where the pond may someday go.
Correct.
So it goes around a, you know, blank area.
What, oh, I'm sorry, Jennifer. Let me just ask a quick question. What is the cost if you took option A and added the pond? If you add the pond, then do you have to add back in all the site walls and all that other stuff?
It's $900,000 difference.
It's pretty much the option B is, which is the 2.8 million. So you can see that it's, the cost for the pond was close to that $800,000 amount. There's a little less trail. That's not done in option B, but in order to get the pond in.
You had the picnic shelter in there, so?
Correct. And the picnic shelter was about $75,000 for that amount.
Okay, it's just tiny, relatively.
May I ask a question?
Oh, go ahead, Don.
Isn't the pond already there and just drained?
No.
It was drained.
There's an old farm pond that was there, but in order to reconstruct it and grade it to the level that it needs to be in order to work for the future pedestrian tunnel under Mooresville Carpenter, that was, we had close to 40,000 cubic yards of earthwork that we were having to move that was causing us to have to cause the cost. And a lot of the cost also in bringing it up to the current standards, the cost of the dam itself was a big cost, and then the outlet structure. So had to bring all those to the current standards. Can't just build it like an old farm pond.
If you didn't have to do the pedestrian tunnel, is the existing pond okay?
Pedestrian tunnel isn't in the first phase, anyway.
Right, but you're planning on it for the future, is my question.
You would still have to meet all the requirements for building the dam structure and everything. So that's something we may have, we would have to look at to see what effect it would have. But just building the dam itself has a lot of cost in it.
Ms. Haidcock?
You know, I, I support the staff's recommendation for option A. I'm gonna tell you why. You know, a lot of times, we have approved some terrific projects, and we can't foresee cost overruns. And we, and we do what's necessary to make sure that that project can, can meet its intended potential. This is one of those times where we can foresee the cost overrun. The citizens, you know, maybe, Lori, you're right, and what they saw was a pond, and that's what they wanted. What I think they saw was, this is how much money I'm willing to let you borrow. And I think we should stick to the budget. I think it'll be a great park, and then when we get the money, we'll add the pond. But I would like us to stay on budget on this, and that's, that's just how I feel about it.
And my desire would be that the plan, whatever we go forward with, allows for a picnic shelter to be included at a later date, that, you know, it's graded for that or whatever, so that that can all be retrofitted in at a later, at a later time, if that's possible.
Okay.
That would be option B, right?
Yeah, there's no picnic shelter in option A.
There's no picnic shelter, that's right, in option A.
It's in B.
But if you can allow for that to occur in the future-
Correct.
-without having to take everything out.
Correct. And as part of the Master Plan, we had planned for not only the picnic shelter next to the restroom, but also other ones next to the playground area. So as part of us finalizing the design, we can see what might be the most efficient way to get it and possibly even put that in as an alternate.
So the picnic shelter, is that picnic shelter slash bathroom?
There was a picnic shelter slash bathroom right in, by the restroom here. And in the Master Plan, we also had a future picnic shelter on the other end of the playground. So we could grade out for that area.
But just to, I want to make sure, there's no bathroom in Plan A, correct?
No, there is a bathroom.
Oh, good, okay.
Okay, 'cause I didn't, I don't see that on the list in option A.
There is a restroom.
It is, okay.
In all three options, there was a restroom.
It's that little pink square right in the middle.
Yep, correct.
I'd support option B, honestly. I don't like the idea that if we go back at a later date and add the pond, you're gonna probably spend twice as much. And I, I think if you're gonna do it, let's do it the Carey way and do it right. But dumb question I have, I heard at the beginning of the meeting, Western Wake Water Reclamation Facility is coming in significantly under budget. Well, that's water. The pond's water. I mean, could you use some of those monies?
Isn't that a different color of money?
Yeah.
Different colors.
Utility.
I said it might be a dumb question.
It's not dumb.
No.
It's just, you just can't get a yes on it.
Okay.
It doesn't make it dumb.
Well, I, I'd rather at least pursue option B.
So I hear interest in option A and option B. Does anybody dare make a motion?
I will. I'm of approval of staff recommendation for option A for the Carpenter Park project.
I'll second. There's a motion, second discussion?
Yeah, if you want option B, don't vote for this one.
Thanks for the instruction, Robert.
I want to see a pond, so I, I guess I won't vote for this one.
That's all right. I won't take it personally.
I think, I, I do think it's a valid point that if the intent is to someday add the pond, we don't want to make it so expensive in the future that we'll be looking back and saying we were, you know, foolish to not just spend some money.
Well, let me clarify that. Are we directing staff to go do option A, B, or C? Are we directing them to come back with, if we picked one, that this is how we're gonna pay for it?
But they're gonna put out a bid, the way I understand it. It might be more or less.
With the elements that we select.
They'll try to get a bid as close to the estimate as possible.
Tell them what elements, and they go try to get a bid for it.
Yeah, and those elements, the way we have presented is option A, B, and C, so.
B is at 2.8 million?
Estimate, correct.
Estimate.
Estimate, correct.
Okay.
Although I was, I was thinking about option in between A and B, which is-
A minus?
A, yeah, or A plus, where-
A plus is above plus.
Yeah, it's everything in A plus the pond, which I don't know where that would come in. I mean, I, is it still 2.8?
Probably would be close to.
It's gonna be very close. I think the, the one item that wasn't in, in B that was in A or was a shelter.
The shelter.
2.725.
Is it right?
Well, and extra loop trail, but yeah.
But right now, we're on option A.
Yes.
So we have a motion. So why don't we take care of option A? So all in favor of option A, please raise their hand. Those opposed?
Lower jacket.
Motion fails two to five. Want to make a motion, Laurie?
I'll make a motion to direct staff to pursue plans for Carpenter Park that include all the elements in option A to include the pond.
I'll second.
Hurry.
However, should that estimate come back in excess of 2.8 million, that comes back to council?
Okay, I'll second.
There's a motion and a second. Discussion? Discussion, like stamp? Yeah, really. It, it's an estimate, so I don't know.
Well, we already have one wrong one. I mean-
I think the estimate will be pretty much the same, is my guess.
Be close. We'll work on that.
Yes.
Again, as we said, I think the bids will really define what the project's go, but we'll take a look at that and let you know if, you know, it's going to be way over that, that figure.
Significantly over, it'll come back. Other than that, we're, we're good.
Okay.
So we have a motion and a second. Further discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Motion carries five to. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have another item that was pulled from the consent agenda. Friars Gate subdivision, Marshville Parkway construction. Ms. Robinson, you asked this one?
Yeah, I just want, I want to hear staff talk about this, why it's in the best interest of the citizens to only put one lane in now. I mean, I have people's-
Is it one lane or two lanes?
It's, it's, well, it's one lane each direction. Yeah. But it's just-
It seemed bizarre.
The reason why I ask is because this is probably the project that people in Western Carey are most concerned about. I just envision that when the Mooresville Parkway punches through, it is going to be driven on by thousands and thousands of cars on day one. So why would we consider putting in only one lane? This reminds me of Cary Parkway over.
Well, I think there's, to answer your question, there's been some things done in the past that kind of, kind of led us to the path of building Marshall Parkway as kind of a phased project. Two lanes initially, and then at its ultimate build-out, it'd be a four-lane roadway. There's a couple of things that, you know, again, we've done some planning of doing a two-lane roadway for this segment between Green Hill Church Road and 55. The turnpike itself has only built a, a bridge with two lanes. So as part of any other project, we'd have to build another two lanes over 540 initially. So just from a cost perspective, getting the continuity established first was always somewhat of a, of a priority. The other thing is, we've done a lot of advanced wetland permitting on this project. We actually permitted it for just two lanes, I think with some discussions with the Corps of Engineers. Unless you can prove that you're gonna have enough traffic on that roadway for a four-lane roadway to justify the impacts, they're gonna make you go back down to, what, what do you need to get your project going? And the two lanes actually is gonna last, you know, forecasting probably at least 10 years, at least. So the other thing that's kind of put into place is, there was a, about two years ago, when the Highcroft Phase Four and Five project, which is immediately to the east of this project, we actually, was a council action to build that roadway in a similar fashion that Friar wants to do, is build it as a two-lane roadway. But their, their project actually extended the two-lane roadway all the way to 55 and included some property off-site. So this is a little bit, a little bit similar in that, in that fashion. But the, you know, again, our project that, yeah, as far as going forward, is trying to establish the two lanes at least to the turnpike. And that doesn't even include what we're gonna do when the interchange goes in. But initially, though, we, we want to do the two-lane roadway.
How do you, do you mind if I ask, how do you do that? Do you do, do you actually get the right-of-way for four lanes, but you only build two lanes?
Correct. And, you know, through all the, all these developments that we're, that are, that are being planned in that quarter right now, they're all giving the ultimate right-of-way for a four-lane roadway. And they're actually grading out the, the roadway itself for four lanes, but they're only putting in the lan, the median, and they're putting in the, the inside lanes on each one. So if and when the town or the state or whoever goes and adds that other two lanes on the outside, it's already graded. We don't have to affect landscaping or shoulders that, and have to regrade all that. So that's, that's the concept through this quarter.
Except for the sidewalk. Yeah. I'm confused, like, what about the sidewalk? I mean, they're, are they putting the sidewalk all the way out so that it's 12 feet plus four, you know, the 16-plus feet outside of the lane?
We actually on, through the two developments that, that are currently being, you know, the one that's currently approved, the Highcroft, they've actually built a 10-foot street-side trail on the outside shoulder of the roadway. So such that it's placed such that we don't have to, when we widen the roadway to its ultimate four-lane, that we have to impact the trail. And that would be similar to what we would do through the Friars Gate subdivision. We would build out the, grade out the ultimate right-of-way, but the, but the street-side trail on the north side of the roadway would be put in place initially, so that we have that, have that connection already in place.
So you have the north side trail?
Right.
And you have no pedestrian movement on the south side of Mooresville Parkway?
Currently, no, not, not right now. Only, the only, the only place that we'd have that would be, you know, there'd be some provision at, at major median openings and the intersections with, with the development roads that come into the, into it.
What's the rationale for that?
Pardon me?
How did I miss the rationale for no pedestrian throughway on the south side? Is it because there's so many driveway cuts or something? I mean, why?
No, it's just, again, I think it's just the fact, I mean, we can put it in there. That's not, that wouldn't be something that we couldn't do. Again, we just, we just didn't do that for the Highcroft subdivision.
You did do it for the Highcroft subdivision.
We did for the street-side trail, but there, but we didn't do sidewalk along the entire frontage, no.
Okay. Is that because there's no development on the south side except for-
Well, because there's, reality is, there's, there's no curb and gutter on the outside.
Uh huh.
But, but we did want to make some pedestrian combination along that corridor, and it just occurred on that north side.
So it's just on that one side?
And again, there's, the driveways spacing on those are, are really pretty far apart, and it could be directed, you know, from the neighborhoods, you know, to the, to the trail on that.
I guess one thing I'm confused about is, if you're gonna do one lane in each direction, why are we not putting in the outside lane with a super-wide median so that we can get the pedestrian relationship established at the very beginning, and then tighten it up right when we get to the bridge? Like, why did we not go that direction?
I think that has to go back to, to, to how, how the core will allow you to cross the streams. They're gonna want it neck-down as, as narrow as you can. And by building it, the lanes on the outside, that actually, you have to span the entire wetland length for a four-lane roadway to do that. And I think they, they-
How wide is this wetland?
Uh, well, they're, they're usually perennial or intermittent streams. So, you know, those, whatever those widths could be. But, you know, generally, you're talking about impacts of probably 150 feet, maybe. Whereas where the two-lane roadways probably, you know, significantly less, probably more like 80 feet, 90 feet.
So it's impact to the stream they're the most concerned about, and they want-
And again, they're, they're real protective about, you know, only giving you enough impact to build your pro, you know, what you're, what, what do you need to build your project for, based on the, the traffic volume that you currently are expecting in the immediate future? The 30-year- The 30-year plan or 30-year traffic volume, they don't want to, they don't really want to, to try to make those impacts, you know, for that future van.
Huh. I think in the future, when, it would be helpful if staff highlighted this at the very beginning, when these projects are kind of coming forward, it's going to be a domino, one project after the next. This needs to be something that is highlighted to the council so that we can make a policy decision about how we want to go forward, because that was never highlighted to us. And I love trees and I love streams, but in the end, I love families and children who want to move around more. And if I'm living on one of these communities and I want my kid to be able to go down to the next neighborhood, I don't want him to have to cross Morrisville Parkway to get to the northbound, you know, the connector on the north side, so he can go down, you know.
And then cross again.
300 feet and cross again. I mean, this is counterintuitive. This is exactly what we don't want happening here in Cary. What we want is pedestrian movements on both sides of the road. So this is nothing against Friar, this is just the fact that I'm not pleased with the way that this is going forward. And I know that a lot of citizens who live along here, especially in Western Cary, are going to be really surprised when a one lane road, two lanes, but one in each direction, gets put in, because already people in Western Cary are feeling tremendous congestion pressure, especially the east-west movement. I mean, they are just trying to hold on as long as they can until we get the Morrisville Parkway in, and then we're going to go stick that in and say, and guess what, guys, it's only one lane in each direction?
But I'm hearing that, that the, the decision doesn't all rest with us. I hear you about the policy decision. If it was all up to us, we'd do it differently. But I'm hearing we don't get to make that choice about the bridge part anyway, right?
The bridge is already, yeah, the bridge is already done, but.
But I'm saying that we can, we, we don't have the option to do.
I think there's two elements here.
One's the sidewalk.
One's the sidewalk and one is the, and where that, where those lanes go.
Right, whether it's outside in or inside out.
Let me clarify. We requested to build a four lane road. The Corps of Engineers said absolutely we could not do it. It wasn't as simple as, they said we could not. There is five stream crossings on this corridor, and every one of those requires their approval. So there'd be no way to flare out and back in and transition along that corridor to accomplish this. We just had no option in this case.
So it's the Corps of Engineer or was it Deener who said?
The Corps of Engineers, we were getting a wetlands permit along the stream corridors.
But we're eventually going to do all four lanes, right? So don't you eventually have to get approval for, cross all?
They're thinking that's 10 years from now and we'll cross that, we're going to intend to cross that.
And they requested us to do it in phases.
Cross that stream when we do it.
You're not the only one who can do puns.
Correct. When, when the traffic volume justifies the four lane, then that would be an amendment to the, to the wetland permit.
Yeah, what you're saying.
To expand that.
Okay. I think it's going to be a lot sooner than 10 years.
It's just interesting that the east side of Morrisville Parkway is already four lanes, and it, it doesn't have the traffic to support four lanes. I mean, there's hardly any traffic on that.
Right.
But we're already deciding that it's going down to two lanes.
Yeah.
So it's just kind of incongruous, the way it's going four lanes.
Yeah.
Down to two.
Yeah.
Sounds like 54.
Yeah.
One more point I would make is, we did get a pedestrian tunnel with Friar, and there's a greenway network, so there's ability, at least at one point, to build a cross and get the link up to some of the trails and things in there.
For Friar, that's nice.
Yes.
What about if you're in one of the other communities?
Yeah, I, I believe we have a sidewalk connection on a piece of it to get down to the trail as well. It's not the full length across Highcroft, but I remember there was one portion that had a, had a trail, a sidewalk on the south side. We'll try to get you that information of where the sidewalks are in more detail.
Okay. I would appreciate that. I, I think it's important.
Motion?
Motion to approve the staff's recommendation.
Second.
There's a motion, second, further discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Time for closed session. Someone read a motion?
Okay, pursuant to GS 143-318-11A3, I move that we hold a closed session to consult with attorneys employed by and/or retained by the town in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorneys and the town. Among other things, the council expects to receive advice conserving the following lawsuit, John K. Johnson versus Town of Cary, and number two, to prevent the disclosure of information that is made privileged or confidential by GS 143-318-10.
There's a motion, a second, discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are in closed session. We'll reconvene our council meeting. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
There's a motion.
Second.
And a second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.[1737.16]